Good afternoon. Welcome to the October 28th, 2025 City Council Meeting. We are down to our last three of the year here. I will call to order this meeting and we will start off with an invocation by Mr. Brett Larson of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, followed by the flag salute. So if everyone could please stand. Welcome.
Thank you. Our kind and gracious Father in Heaven, we are so very grateful to be gathered here today as a community to counsel and discuss about items of benefit to all those who live here. We're grateful for this beautiful city in which we live. We're grateful for the opportunities that are before us. We're grateful for the school system, for those teachers and administrators who help to teach and guide our youth and children. We ask you to bless them to serve with honesty and integrity. We're so very grateful for the first responders and law enforcement officials who protect us and give of their lives and safety every day so that we can feel safe and comforted in this community. We ask a special blessing to be over families of all sizes, shapes, and types, that they might be able to teach values and standards of benefit to their children and to those around them. We ask thee please to bless this council today, that we might be able to be peacemakers in a difficult world. Bless us to communicate with kindness, humility, meekness, and patience. We are so, once again, very grateful for the many blessings which thou hast bestowed upon all of us in all of our lives, families, and work spaces. We ask for these blessings and give these thanks to thee in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for that. If everyone could please stay standing and face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alexander.
Here, ma'am.
Mayor Kalfis.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwank.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
All right. We will start off with our presentations tonight. Our first one of the afternoon will be a certificate of recognition to Leah D. Bernardo of Cultivating Good, Inc., for recognition as a top 100 business by U.S. Chamber of Commerce. So Ms. Leah, if you'd like to come to the podium here, I'll meet you down there. Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will be happy to read the certificate for Leah. The City of Temecula recognizes Cultivating Good Incorporated for being honored as one of the top 100 businesses of 2025 by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. Founded by Joanne and Leah D. Bernardo, Cultivating Good Incorporated was selected from an applicant pool of over 12,500 businesses and distinguished for their growth, innovative strategies, and robust workplace culture. Cultivating Good Incorporated operates Hello, Your Welcome in Pasadena, and Eat Marketplace, a recognized leader in fostering community well-being and exceptional culinary experiences in Temecula. The City of Temecula proudly celebrates this prestigious acknowledgement together with Cultivating Good Incorporated and wishes them continued success in all their future endeavors. Congratulations.
We would love to hear a few words from you.
I don't know where to go.
Right here's perfect.
Running over there to Randy. Thank you for reading that. Is that Becky or it was you, Randy, right? Thank you so much. I just want to say it takes a village. It's not just my sister and I. It's my entire team, and I wish they could all be here. We employ, you know, we've employed hundreds of people from Temecula, and it's the community, it's the Chamber of Commerce, it's Visit Temecula Valley, it's our school district, and it's the city who has lifted us up to be who we are for 23 years in this town. So really, it's not just us. So thank you for lifting us up so we can do what we get to do in this community. Thank you.
I see Brooke Nunn in the audience. Would you love to say a few words? And we would love to hear from you. This is Brooke, our CEO of the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, city staff, and the members of the community. On behalf of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, it is a privilege to recognize and congratulate Chef Leah D. Bernardo and her team at Cultivating Good, Inc. and Eat Marketplace for being named one of the top 100 businesses of 2025 by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. Leah's journey is one of perseverance, vision, and heart. What began as a small business and a dream has grown into a nationally recognized enterprise that embodies the spirit of Temecula. As a family and woman-owned business, Cultivating Good champions local organic farmers, chefs, and artisans who bring authenticity, sustainability, and purpose to the table. Leah is not only a business leader, but a true community champion. Having earned the Chamber's Citizen of the Year and Business of the Year honors, she continues to demonstrate how passion, integrity, and hard work can transform both a business and a community. Her success shines as an inspiration to all who believe in the power of local entrepreneurship and the impact of leading with purpose. Leah, your achievements reflect the very best of Temecula: innovative, passionate, and unstoppable. Congratulations on this remarkable honor, and thank you for continuing to cultivate good in everything you do. Thank you.
I like that name. Congratulations.
I don't think we could say anything more well said than what Brooke just said. That was amazing. We are lucky to have individuals like yourself in our community and in Temecula, and I don't think, who was in the building before Eat, before you were there?
Oh, my goodness. So that's David Ferris's property, right? And I believe that it was a tea, it was a tea house. And, oh, before that, it was Volknir. So Chef Volknir had it in the early days, and it was an Austrian deli way back, right, Aaron? Yeah.
I've never seen that corner so busy since you've been in there. It's constant. It is constant. No, it's been constant. It's amazing. Your business is amazing. We are lucky to have you in Temecula. Brooke said it perfectly. Well said. Congratulations. We're excited to have you, and we're excited to see what you continue to do.
Yeah, amen to that. I'll grab a photo.
Anybody call always have any words while we're taking a picture? Everyone want to come down, take a picture as well, as soon as we're done?
If you don't mind, I want to say something really quick, because Leah, I've known you for a long, long time. When you were first located over on Jefferson, I remember riding my bike over there and getting like a sandwich or something, and then finding Roast House Coffee and your wonderful, beautiful late sister, Deb. She means the world to me, meant the world to me. You and your family are just amazing, beautiful people, and we're so blessed to have you in our community.
You had to say Deb's name, right?
I love Deb so much, and I nigged you too. So she's with us, you know?
She absolutely is with us today. You remember that? Thank you.
Just real quick, too. Top 100 small businesses in the country. It's a remarkable achievement to bring home to Temecula, and only you could have done it.
Oh, thank you, Matt. I am old enough. I know. Hey, her chef. This. God bless each and every one of you. I know you do. Yeah, she's so sweet. Aaron, how many times have I told you the brooch is mine? Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Just have to go get a little. When Michael was crying in the valley.
All righty, we will move on to our next presentation, which is the 2025 Community Opinion Survey presented by True North. Dr. Tim McClarnie, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm Tim McClarnie. I am the president of True North Research. We are a firm that for almost 25 years now has specialized in working with cities in California as well as other types of public agencies and using surveys to help them develop a statistically reliable understanding of the communities and the customers that they serve. To date, my business partner and I, working as a two-person team, have designed and conducted over 1,500 research studies for public agencies, more than 500 for California cities. And I mention that mainly because as I go through today's presentation of your community survey findings, I may make reference to how the results we're seeing here compared to what we might be seeing in other cities. I just wanted you to have a sense from the experience base from which I'd be speaking. There is a full report, has a lot more details that we're going to cover today. This is just going to hit some of the highlights, but I, as I go, I welcome questions from council along the way or at the end, whichever is your preference. Okay. So before we talk about the results, I hope to take a moment to review the methodology of the study or how we went about conducting the study. When you're doing a statistically reliable survey, the most important thing to start out with is a random sample. We use what's called stratified random sampling, where we start with a database of households in Temecula. We stratify it by geography. We randomly pick households and then an adult within the household, and then we monitor as we go through data collection to make sure that our sample matches the profile of adult residents in Temecula based on the latest census ACS estimates. Once we pulled our sample, we recruited it using three different methods: email, text, and telephone. Everything's PIN-protected, and what I mean by that is, in order to be able to participate in the survey, you had to be part of our random sample. You can complete it one time only. You couldn't forward it on to your 10 best friends, tell them how to answer the questions, so we protect the integrity of the study. Folks had the opportunity to participate either by telephone or online, whichever was the preference. We had contracted to do 500 completed interviews. We walked back in the door with 1,114. So I always have to estimate what the participation rate's going to be for a survey like this. Obviously, I estimate it a little conservatively for Temecula residents. We had a great participation rate, and so all those extra interviews come back to the city for free, no extra charge. But the neat thing about that is with a sample that large, it reduces our overall margin of error due to sampling for this study to plus or minus 2.9%. And what that means is we can be 95% confident that the results I'll share with you today are within 2.9% of what we would have found had we spoken with all of your adult residents. Okay, so on to the results. We open up with a couple of questions that are designed to get residents' top-of-mind sort of perceptions of the city. The first question was, what are the one or two things that you like most about living in the city of Temecula? This was an open-ended question. We didn't present the list that you see here and say, pick one or two. They got to just tell us in their own words. We went back and reviewed the verbatim responses and then grouped them into the categories that you see here. You can see at the top of the list, references to the safety of the community and the low crime rate in Temecula was the number one at 21%. By the way, that was also the number one response when we did this survey four years ago in 2021. The cleanliness of the city at 18%, references to the quality in the schools of education, and then proximity to areas and attractions outside the city. And so also the cleanliness of the city, that was a top three in 2021 as well. So that last question was about what you enjoy about living in Temecula. This one, we sort of turned it around and said, if you could make, if the city government could change one thing to make Temecula a better place to live now and in the future, what change would you like to see? Here again, open-ended. They got to tell us in their own words what issues came to mind. We then reviewed the verbatim responses and grouped them into the categories you see here. Top of the list, about one out of four mentioned reducing traffic congestion. That was also the number one in 2021. About 18% mentioned limiting growth and development, followed by improving and repairing roads. And then you had about 11%, I think, if I did my math quickly, that either are not sure, can't think of anything, or a little further down said, actually, it's 12%, indicated that, I'm sorry, yeah, 13%, that no changes are needed. So either can't think of anything or no changes are needed. So this next, those two were the opening questions. We start now to get into some of the more structured questions, and this first one here is in some ways kind of the most important issue or slide that we'll talk about, and it's the answers to the question, generally speaking, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the city is doing to provide city services? Because we're asking them to talk about the city's performance overall, we're not narrowing down to a specific service area like streets and roads or police, it can be thought of as an overall performance rating for the city. And what you see here on the left in 2025, you had 82% of residents tell us that they were satisfied with the city's overall performance in providing municipal services. That is really similar in terms of the overall satisfaction to 2021 at 83%. And if you dig behind this and you look at how the results break out across subgroups, so how long have you lived in the community? Do you have, you know, children in the home? What's your age, et cetera? All these different subgroups, for all but one subgroup, we had that range of satisfaction going from a low of 71% to a high of 88%. So it was widespread. I will say that, you know, we get to do this type of work for a lot of cities around the state. Anytime you have eight out of 10 of your customers, so to speak, say that they are satisfied with your overall performance, that is a good, solid number. Highest I've ever seen in 25 years is in the sort of mid-'90s, and you don't, I haven't seen a '90s in quite a while, and I've seen them as low as in the '40s. So it gives you a sense of where you're performing. So that last slide was the answers to how are we doing overall? The next two slides here, what we do is we drill down into 27 specific service areas to ask that same basic question: overall, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the city's efforts in this area? I've broken them into two tiers here just to make it easier to read. If I put them all on one slide, no one would be able to read it. But you can see here that this top tier, you have at least 83% of respondents say that they are satisfied with the city's efforts for each one of the services on that list. Top of the list here, you see providing library services at 96% satisfied, fire protection and prevention services, EMS, as well as special events. So everything on that slide is 82% or higher, or 83% or higher. As you go down the list, you start to see the satisfaction levels sort of tail off at the bottom for things like managing residential growth in the city, addressing homelessness, promoting jobs development in the city. One thing I've noticed on those types of items is, is these are the kind of things that the city doesn't maintain full control over, right? You don't have total control over managing growth and development in the city. You have entitled lands, certainly homelessness. There's limits to what a city can do in terms of addressing homelessness. Same thing with promoting jobs development in the city. So we tend to see that the items that trickle to the bottom of the list are the things that aren't fully in the city's control. We saw on an earlier slide that traffic congestion was sort of the number one issue for residents in the community, and so we asked a series of questions on that topic, one of which had to do with the new northbound I-15 lanes. And so we prefaced it by reminding the respondent that the city does not have jurisdiction over Interstate 15, but the city has been raising grant money and constructing improvements to reduce congestion on I-15 through Temecula. In particular, the city recently constructed three miles of connector and distributor lanes on I-15 between, north between Temecula and Murrieta, and a new I-15 northbound auxiliary lane between Temecula Parkway and Rancho California Road. And with reference to these lanes, we asked, that were completed in November, just shortly before the survey, I mean, that were completed just shortly before the survey, have you noticed a reduction in traffic congestion on the I-15 northbound driving from San Diego County through Temecula? As you can see here, more than half of respondents said yes. They've noticed that there has been a traffic reduction on I-15 that can be, in their minds, attributed to those lanes. About 30% indicated they hadn't noticed that, and the rest were unsure. We also, more broadly, asked residents whether, generally speaking, are they satisfied or dissatisfied with the city's efforts to improve traffic circulation by improving roads and intersections, implementing traffic calming measures, traffic, timing traffic signals, and other measures? And you can see here that in this cycle, in 2025, we had about 2/3 of respondents say yes, they were satisfied. That's an uptake from where we were in 2021. I think the takeaway here, and we've seen this in past surveys that we've done for the city of Temecula, I mean, traffic remains an issue, but when you zero in and ask, how do you feel about the city's performance in doing what it can to sort of moderate traffic congestion and make improvements, that you always see that, yes, traffic's an issue, but we also recognize that the city's making a good effort in that area. Switching gears here, you know, like all cities, the city of Temecula has a limited budget and probably a seemingly unlimited list of things that place demands on that budget. You can't fund everything, so ultimately, you have to prioritize. So we took the opportunity in the survey to see how residents would prioritize across all the items you see there on the left side of the slide. Should this be a high priority, a medium priority, a low priority for city spending, or should we not be spending any money on that item? And to introduce a sense of competition, we sort of reminded them that not everything can be high priority. And as you can see here at the top of the list, what tends to sort of trickle to the top are either public works or public safety-related items, right? So number one here being maintaining streets, parks, public facilities, and infrastructure. Number two, making infrastructure improvements to improve traffic circulation. Number three, fire protection and paramedics on down. So the public safety, public works tend to sort of rise at the top of the list for residents' priorities. The other things tend to fall a little lower. I want to emphasize that just because it's not a top-tier item doesn't mean that residents don't want this, right? The only, the red bar indicates the percentage who said we shouldn't be spending money on it. It's just when push comes to shove, right, and recognizing you have a limited budget, this is how they would prioritize. So in a lot of ways, staff are sort of the day-to-day face of the city, right? When a resident has a service need and they come to the city, they're going to be interacting with city staff. We found that about one out of four, 25% of respondents we spoke to, indicated they had in the past 12 months interacted with staff on some issue. And for those individuals who had that first-person interaction with staff, we simply asked them to tell us, how would they rate staff in terms of their courteousness, professionalism, knowledge, and helpfulness? And as you can see here on the slide, staff gets high marks across the board, ranging from a high of 93% on courteous down to 85% for helpful. Okay, so one more wrap-up side. As I mentioned, there's a lot more detail in the full report, so I'll just be brief here. What does all this mean? In a lot of ways, you can look at these surveys as kind of a report card on the city's performance, right? It's a chance to go out, talk to residents, ask them how you're performing, what are their needs, and where can we improve? And so when you look at it from a report card perspective, this is a really good report card. It's another solid report card for the city. We found that residents continue to be quite satisfied with Temecula, both as a place to live and in terms of the city's overall performance. We saw that, you know, when they looked at their, the folks who had actually interacted with city staff, they had high marks for that experience. And specifically, you know, we have a number of items where you've got 90-plus percent of residents saying that they were satisfied with the city's efforts to provide city services. And so, you know, this is, you know, again, a great report card, and the one thing I'd want to emphasize is that, having done this a lot, and for a lot of cities around the state, when you get numbers like this, you should be proud, because these are earned, they are not given. What I mean by that is if you, as a city, were underperforming in some way, and you go out to your community and you say, "Tell us how we're doing," they're more than happy to tell you how you're doing, right? They're going to point it out. And so when you get really solid numbers, you've got eight out of 10 residents saying that either they're satisfied with their performance, you should believe that, and it's, and it's a testimony of the good work and good leadership. Now, like any customer satisfaction study, it should be a bit about kind of how are we doing today, but also where can we improve? And some of the items you see there at the bottom of the list are items where, you know, relative to the other issues that we tested in the poll, this is the area where either residents see the greatest opportunity for improvement, or just although the satisfaction levels are high, they're just not as high as in some other areas. So with that, in my presentation, I welcome any questions from council with Arnie.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Any comments? All righty, thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate you. Thank you very much. With that, we will move, we're going to skip forward in our agenda a little bit here. We do have some individuals that are from out of country, so we're going to move up to our business item. We're going to start off with business item number 22. And business item number 22 is approved Phase II of previously authorized purchase and installation agreement and software-as-service agreement with Frog Parking, Inc. for parking sensors within remaining public parking spaces in Old Town.
Mr. Mayor, I do need to make an announcement that Councilmember Ron will abstain on the following items on today's consent calendar. Consent calendar item number 13, the 30-day street closure of First Street from Old Town Front to Pujol Street. And consent calendar item 14, temporary street closures for Old Town 2025 Winterfest events. Councilmember Ron will also not participate in the council discussion and action on council business item 22, Frog Parking, Old Town Phase II that you're just bringing up to this time. Councilmember Ron has established Inferno Distillery LLC and will enter into a lease with Eat's Marketplace to establish a craft distillery, tasting room, and cocktail service located at 28410 Old Town Front Street, number 112. Councilmember Ron may remain at the council dais for the two consent calendar items unless the council member requests one or both be taken off consent calendar for discussion or questions, but he must leave the dais for the discussion of the Frog Parking of Phase II discussion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thorson. We will wait for Councilmember Ron to exit the dais, and then we will go on with the presentation. All right, let us continue on with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and fellow council members. As you know, staff has been working with Frog Parking on our Phase I parking sensor project here in Old Town. This afternoon's discussion is going to be whether or not we should move forward with Phase II. Kind of put together a little roadmap for today's presentation so you understand the different sections I'll be talking about. First, we're going to talk about the background of the project. How did we get here today? What were some of the assumptions we had going into this? We had a pretty big one. And then what were the observations that we've seen since working with the system? How can data help us in the future with regard to parking policy in Old Town? What are some key questions to consider when you're working on different policy issues with regards to parking in Old Town? Also, what are the current and future capabilities of the system? So in other words, what is currently under contract now and what could be under contract in the future should the council decide to move forward with those optional items? We have added cost adjustment because we believe an enhancement is in order from what we've learned from Phase I of the pilot program. You're going to see the different sensor types that would be utilized throughout Old Town. And then just a recap of the city council subcommittee discussion, as well as the Old Town Local Advisory Committee discussion on Phase II. So for project background, I just want to start off just by quickly showing, I know all of us here that have been working with this are familiar with Phase I and Phase II, but perhaps there are those watching that maybe didn't know this was broken up into a couple of phases. What we have here is Phase I of the pilot program. It's basically from the Northern Arch down to Main Street. It's in those yellow spaces you see along Old Town Front Street. Approved, Phase II will maintain those spaces, but also all the green areas you see. These are the public parking spaces within the downtown core and also the parking structure. That'll be included as well with Phase II. The project background, staff and council, they've always used data, accurate data, and expert advice to make policy decisions in the city and in Old Town, and that's really why it's the success that it is today. The last council meeting, you heard from KMA, and they highlighted a lot of the different things that have been done, really, over past several decades that have created to that success. But Old Town is basically now at a crossroad. We have to figure out, how do we best manage our curb and our parking assets that we have down here? The place is popular, people are parking, we've got to address it in some way. What do I mean by managing those assets? Well, basically, as I'll show later in the presentation, there are a lot of different interests in Old Town, and they're each looking at parking kind of through their own lens. What I mean by managing is, we have to balance all the different thoughts and ideas and the wants of the people who come down here as best as we possibly can. In the past, we've done that by trying to do manual counts. We've had a company come down here, they spend two or three days, they count up the spaces. The problem with those manual methods is you can poke holes all over them. Somebody could say, "Well, you got those results because it was too hot. It was too cold. It was raining. There was an event going on." So you spend all this money on a, on a manual parking study only to have folks just basically tear it apart. So what we did is we thought, there's got to be a better way to do this. So we hired Fer and Peers to analyze six technology solutions that could help us manage As we know, the impavement centers, that's what was selected. We sent out a request for proposal, and Frog Parking was selected in November of last year. And we've been working with it ever since February of this year. So what's an assumption that we had, and what are some of the observations? What's it telling us as we've had it now for several months? Well, first, we need to understand that knowing what's going on here in Old Town with parking is key to really understanding how to make good policy decisions down here. And going into this, we thought for sure that that Phase I section, which was 88 spaces, it was going to be at full capacity, certainly during peak hours, you know, lunchtime, dinnertime, Fridays, weekends, when there's events going on, we thought for sure. The system showed us that that wasn't the case, even on a holiday weekend. And this is the first graph I'm going to show today. This is right out of the system, and it's showing the maximum amount of parking per day. This is the month of September. So there on the x-axis, we have September 1st, 2nd, 3rd, so on and so forth. And on the y-axis, the horizontal- And on the Y-axis, the horizontal, we have the number of spaces. That right there is Labor Day, right there on September 1st. That line right there represents the 88 spaces. So we didn't reach maximum occupancy even on a holiday. And you can see there, for the rest of September, we still didn't reach the maximum occupancy. We're able to verify this because staff, this is actually right out of the system as well, didn't quite believe that, so we decided we need to check it out. So we look at a screen like this, we can see the spaces that are available, the spaces that are empty, and we literally went down there, physically counted and verified, and yes, it's accurate. So what else is the system telling us? We've talked before about the 85% threshold, and that's the industry standard where once you reach that point, you need to do something with your parking because that's when people start having to circle around looking for spaces. So how did we do? What we did is we took March through September, we didn't include February or October because we're not, we don't have complete months for that. And for March, 66% of the days in March, we had either hit 85 or exceeded 85%. And you can see as we go through the different months here, we're well over half, obviously, almost coming up on three-quarters. We have a dip in August, but we attribute that to, it's hot, that's probably what the reason is there. Then we have September. We also discovered that the majority of the parking sessions in Old Town are an hour or less. This graph right here shows March through September, and there on the X-axis, those are minutes, so zero to 60 is one hour, then two hours, and so on and so forth. And then on the Y-axis, you have the number of sessions. So you can clearly see that from March through September, the majority of sessions are one hour or less in parking. And it's kind of interesting to know, we had almost 90,000 sessions, just a little under. That's a big number, that's more than we expected. So how can having additional data help us here in the future by implementing Phase Two? Well, having the accurate data can help us in making decisions related to it. And on the next several slides, I'm going to go through kind of a bullet list of all the different policy decisions that could come up with parking. As I go through this, you might see something that you think of right now that's maybe not on the list, and that's really the whole point, because there's so much to consider with parking, it's almost endless. First we have is residential parking permits. We've heard that talked about before. Should we have it? If we do, why and where? Those are things we need data for. And with the state, all the different things they're passing, they're eliminating parking, they're reducing parking, so those are things we have to keep an eye on. Should we allow overnight parking? If we do, where should we put it? Additional data could help us with street closures? Event and economic coordination? This is an interesting one. What we mean by economic coordination is, let's just say if we get the additional data, we start to notice, let's just say Thursday's not as busy typically. Maybe we should do events on Thursdays, maybe that'll bring more people down here. Maybe they'll go to restaurants and shops while they're here. Something else to consider, something else that we need the data for in order to make those types of decisions. Should employees have their own parking area? I don't mean city employees, we're talking the folks who work here in Old Town. Should we do time parking? If so, where? Again, we need the data. Delivery parking, should there be a special place for that? Now, just put a picture up here, I realize that is a trash truck there, but the photo does show the point of, you have two large trucks conducting their business. If you're a car trying to get through there, you're kind of wedging between the two of them. Is there a better place to put deliveries? Should they go somewhere else? Again, we need the data to figure that out. Drop-off and pickups, that's Uber and Lyft. That's important too, because I'm sure you've all seen, somebody's on the curb, they're waiting for their Lyft, here comes the person, they run out in the street to get in the backseat of the car and take off. Maybe there should be a dedicated drop-off and pickup area. We need the data to figure out if that's the case. Trash pickup could be impacted, street sweeping. When and where to implement the Old Town parklets? Is there an area that maybe isn't as busy? We could put them there to kind of draw attention, bring folks over there. Construction timing and phasing, that could be impacted. Advertising, where to park on social media and on our website? That could be dependent on the time of year and what type of events are going on, letting folks know where they can park. Private parking lots, should we have them again? Should we manage them? Is there a demand for them? We need the data. Tunnel of transportations, should we go to having the Old Town trolley again? Where should we put future parking lots and garages? Should we have one? Should we have two? How many spaces should be in there? We're not sure until we have data. Grab-and-go parking for folks who are just running in to grab their takeout order? Should we make updates to the Old Town specific plan parking standards? Is there a need for that? And then potential, if there's any, for paid or metered parking? Is that warranted? To figure that out, we need to understand what's going on. So when you look at all of those items, and any of them that you maybe thought of while you were listening to those, there's some questions you have to consider, but you also have to understand all the different interests down here in Old Town. Old Town is a mixed-use district, and this building right here kind of illustrates all the different folks that are in here. On the first floor, this is right down here in Old Town, you have businesses, you have restaurants, you have shops, and there's a beauty parlor up there on the other side. Second story, you've got people living, you've got people working. So all the folks that are going to be in here, they're all looking at parking through their own lens. The resident wants to have parking right up in the front. You know, they come home with a bunch of groceries, they don't want to be walking from far away to get into their, into their house, or they got kids they got to bring upstairs and whatnot. The business owner, they obviously want to have parking near their business, so that way customers can easily get into their shop. The employees, they want to park near their place of employment, so they don't have to walk too far. And tourists want to park to wherever it is they're going down here to see, a restaurant, a shop, entertainment, whatever the case may be. The key thing to remember here in looking at all this is, everybody wants it up front. Everybody wants to be close by. And it's tough to be all things to all people, so what do we do? That's that balancing I was talking about earlier. How do we use what we have, balance it so we can try to help these different interests as best as possible? So in looking, again, going back to those three slides, all those different bullets, there's some broad questions you first have to ask yourself on any of those if you're going to move forward is, well, should you do it? Why are why, why are why not? And if you're going to do it, where and for how long? And how do you know if it was a good decision or not? And that's really just the tip of the iceberg, that's just the starting point. Full implementation of Phase Two, we think, will help us get there. So what are those deeper questions on each of those? Well, I've got two different examples that I'd like to go through that just kind of zero down, digging in deeper, and what we'd have to do should you just tell us, you know, move forward with residential parking permits? What do we have to figure out? Well, some of the questions are, okay, if we're going to do residential parking permits, where should we put them? If we put them over here, is it going to interfere with this person's business? Will it interfere with that person's business? What's the impact on those folks? Maybe, maybe there should be a loading zone in front of residential uses, so that way people can drop off their groceries or whatnot. How long should a parking permit be? Should it just be 24/7? Should it only be in the nights? Should it only be on weekends, or weekdays? Who knows? Enforcement, what happens if someone goes against it? Are we going to tow them? Are we going to ticket them? Is that going to be 24/7? And costs. Is it going to be free? Is it going to be discounted for certain folks? If we do that, could it be considered a gift of public funds, meaning we can't do that? And just this one alone, residential parking permits, this will impact all the things you see here on the table, depending on where you put it. Trash service, delivery, construction, special events, camping, if folks, you know, we've seen some of that here recently, folks in their cars, unfortunately. Abandoned vehicles, what if something's been there for months? The sensor will tell us if it's been there for months. Maintenance of those areas, you know, will we have to move folks if that portion of the, of a parking lot or street needs to be maintained? Where do we have those folks go in the meantime? So let's get to those, another one of the hypothetical questions here, and that's the addition of a parking garage. These are all the different things we'd have to figure out if we were told, let's move forward to parking garage. Well, how many spaces is it going to be? In order to know how many spaces, we need to know what the demand is. That directly impacts, how tall should it be? Also, how are you going to finance it? You got to be able to show there's an adequate demand to move forward with it. Where should it be? And should there be two of them? Is there going to be a timed garage? Should it be staffed or automated? Self-driving vehicles, can they access it? And the last here, pretty important too, because can we optimize what we already have for less money, maybe time parking or something else, and optimize the parking asset we already have? Or can we lease spaces? There's private lots here in Old Town, can we lease something for less money? And if we do that, should it, should we only be leasing during peak times, or weekdays, or weekends? Again, we need the data to figure that out. So as you can see, with each decision, there's just multiple consequences that just kind of reverberate right through the district. And they all have financial considerations, and they all have trade-offs, and that's why we want to be as precise as we can when making decisions. And in order to do that, we got to have the data that will help us get there. So what are the current and the future capabilities? Basically, for right now, what's in the contract for Phase One and Phase Two, if it's approved, is that we're getting the data, we're getting the information, we're getting, you know, some of the charts that you've seen before, we're able to run those reports and find out, okay, what's going on. Should the council decide to move forward with additional items? Frog does offer what you see here before you. We have the mobile app, which can tell people where to park, whatnot. They have enforcement and parking permit software tools, variable messaging signage, they have barrier gates, advertising vouchers, and they also have parking validation. My thought is, you know, folks, we've all done parking validation before. You go in an area, you shop or you eat somewhere, you get your parking validated. They have that all built in if you decide to move forward with something like that. So what we've seen from the system is, it does provide a wide range of data. We've seen that not every space is utilized in the way that we thought it was. And again, this is just though for that Phase One area. The results could be completely different on the other side of Old Town, we don't know. We've seen that enhancement is needed for efficiency, and I'll talk about that here in just a minute. And we've gone out and field verified that it's accurate and it's working. So what's that enhancement, excuse me, and cost adjustment? We've provided enhancement to it from working with Phase One, and we've seen something that we really think we need to have on this. And it's important to point out that the revised total from Frog is still within the contingent, well within the contingency that has already been approved by the council. So right here, I just put together, just to show the costs. The original cost that we have there is on the first row, it's the $549,000 and change. And then we have just below that, the improvement with the, excuse me, the enhancement cost, and then we have the difference. And that last column and row, that right there is the total amount that's already been approved if you count the contingency. So what we're looking at wanting to add, needing to add here, are the visual indicators in the parking structures, in the parking structure, excuse me. Here's those lights, you've probably been to all different types of parking structures. You see the lights, tells you, red, there's no one there, green, you can get, you can get in there. That's really helpful to folks who are coming to Old Town. I'm sure you've had a time where you're at a parking structure, and you think, oh, there's a spot, you get up to it, and somebody put a smart car there. You know, you have to keep going. This will help kind of stop things like that. The maintenance costs for years one and two, those are now free, and I just put the costs up there. And since we're talking numbers, just to get back to those manual counts, the last time we had that checked out, it was over half a million dollars to have a company come out for, I think it was three days, and manually count this. And again, that's for that snapshot in time that you can poke holes in. So if approved for Phase Two, what type of sensors would be utilized here in Old Town? In the parking garage, where there's no direct sunlight, you're going to get those racks along the ceiling like I just showed. And then once you kind of come out around the second floor, and you're going on to the third floor where the sun starts to hit, then we're going to get these guys right here, these are the solar-mounted ones. These are affixed, which is an epoxy and a couple, three screws. And then for the rest of the street segments and the parking lots, you're going to get the pucks that we already have, those ones. So just a quick discussion on what was discussed at the City Council Subcommittee, Old Town Local Advisory Committee. We went to the City Council Subcommittee August this year. They were provided an update on what we've seen and the different cost increases and whatnot, and they were supportive of the project. Same basically true of the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, we went there on the 23rd, just the other day. They were updated on everything, and they were also supportive of the project. So based on the information that's presented, staff does recommend that council authorize Phase Two of the Frog Parking project. This concludes my presentation. Available for questions, we also have folks from Frog here as well, if you'd like to speak with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that staff report. Do any of my colleagues have any questions of staff? Councilmember Stewart?
So you mentioned private parking. What do we have authority over private parking?
So that was if, should we go back to having our own lots and managing those. Currently in the Old Town specific plan, the Old Town specific plan used to have parking lots as a use you could put in, and we took that out. The question is, is there enough demand that we should allow them back in? We're not sure, we need the data to figure that out.
So I'm still confused. So you said there was private parking lots in the Old Town specific plan, but right now we have private parking lots that are being utilized for, you know, pay, pay-to-play. So do we have any control over that?
No, no, we don't. What I was getting at, sorry if I was unclear, what I was getting at was, again, in that Old Town specific plan, should we update it to allow private lots again? Because right now, we don't allow them. Those that you see down there, they're all grandfathered in.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay, got it. All right.
Just to clarify that question, with that, you're saying that we need to know if we need to add more private parking lots than what we currently have, and the data would help us determine that?
Yes, should we know? Do we need, how do we figure out if we need to allow private parking lots to be back into the Old Town specific plan as an allowable or a conditional use? Because right now, they're not allowed, period. Maybe there's enough demand down here to warrant it.
Any other questions? All right, I have a few questions here. Can we pull up the slide with the, referred to the 85 percentile? And once we get there, if you could just reiterate what that 85 percentile
Sure.
meant? Sorry for making you skip through all this.
It's okay, it was a little farther back than I remembered. Okay, there we go. So what I was talking about here with that 85% threshold, that 85% is an industry standard in the parking industry, where it's known that if you cross over that in your occupancy, that's where you need to start figuring out something to do with your parking, because that, that is the point where people start circling around looking for parking spaces. If you're under that 85%, then you can be reasonably assured you'll find a spot pretty quick. You cross over that, again, that's where the circling starts. That's an industry standard.
So this is saying that, for instance, 20 of the 31 days in March, 66% of the time, we crossed over that 85% threshold.
At some point during the day, we crossed over it. I can show you that here in just a moment if you'd like to see. Show you, give me just one moment.
While you're looking for that, would it be fair to say with that statistic alone on face value, that it is time for us to do something in regards to parking?
It would appear to be so in this particular spot of Old Town. But again, other portions of Old Town, maybe it's different. Maybe it's even more impacted, maybe it's less, not sure. And Mr. Mayor, right here, this is March, and it is, it's in a table format, but what you can see there, all the way there on the left, you have the days of the week, date and whatnot. And then if you keep going over to where it says peak utilization, third from the right, so for that first Saturday, we hit 88.64% sometime in the 9:00 AM hour. And then we had 10 spaces left over. That's what that means, and I have that for the different months that I presented.
So this data right here, this one's a little tough for me because, let's see the the
It's a lot of numbers, yeah.
A lot of numbers, but the most day that it was filled up was 84 out of the 88 spots. And for instance, there was a day in May when we had the rod run. Obviously not vehicles are parked in all of those spots, but it could be debated that all 88 spots were occupied either by a vehicle, by a motorcycle, by chairs, by something. But that complete capacity in the 88 spots is not reflected in this data.
No, let me go, May? Let me go to May.
What day was the rod run? Fourth?
It was the fourth, is that what you said?
I think so, yeah.
So May 4th, we got two, we hit that, that's right there.
So it should have been the third, because that would be the Saturday.
Is it the?
So with that one saying, you know, obviously, this is a deviation of accuracy. But with that one, it'd be, I would argue, it's three spots off, right? Because all 88 spots were filled.
Yeah, on a, on a rod run. But see, the beauty of the system is you can tell it when there's a special event. So it'll know you're going to see the parking, you're going to see the parking full in this spot.
So even though it doesn't reflect in the data, you'd be able to tell going more into it?
Because we know, we know the event schedule. So we know what to expect.
Got it. All right, next question here. Thank you for that very much. Sorry, I have a whole laundry list of things here. With the Phase One and the Pilot One, I guess the question would be asked is, what did the data tell us, and what are we looking for it to solve? So I guess my overall question for Pilot One is, in totality, what did it tell us? And if we only had Phase One, if Old Town was only 88 spots, what would the recommendation be as far as increasing parking? Or as far as monitoring parking? Or what, what is the solution that this parking data tells us with Pilot One?
If we have Pilot One, it's telling us that we are crossing over that 85 percent threshold. So we need to figure out something with our parking, whether that's timed or permits or something, because we are crossing over, well over almost three quarters of the way through of those days is going to 85 percent, is going over 85 percent. So something needs to be done. But again, the other side of Old Town could be completely different. We don't know.
No, absolutely. The, I guess the difficult part I have is the $600,000 earmarked value. For me, it's like, well, in my mind, you know, and data is objective, right? And subjectively, you look down at Old Town and the, the sentiment in the communities that there's not enough parking in Old Town. But the data allows us to have objective reasoning behind decisions we make. For me, it's objective that we will need more parking, I would say. But the question is, is where, you know? So I guess for the parking garage here, when we did not have the Frog analysis, and you mentioned that we need the data to decide how tall it is, how many spots there is, where we locate it, how do we decide on this parking garage, how many spots, and where to locate it, and how tall to make it?
We'd look at the, you'd look at the demand. And for that, we would, we would rely on the experts who build parking structures in our Public Works Department as well, to understand how many spaces do we need to have in there. If you've got a lot of folks parking, let's say, on the, the north end of the city, perhaps that's where our parking structure goes. Or if there's not a lot of folks on the southern end, maybe it goes down there to draw more people that way possibly. And we also look at the uses in the Old Town specific plan.
And I'm not sure, was there studies done? I'm assuming there were in regards to the parking structure that were similar to a Frog data analysis to determine what was needed at that time?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I don't recall that. I mean, that was like probably 18, 19 years ago. But I would imagine that we did some type of analysis. Of course, we didn't have Frog technology back then. But we did some type of analysis to determine what size parking structure we were going to do when we relocated over 200 employees down to the downtown, and where were they going to park? Plus, on top of that, where was the public needing parking spaces during that time? So we arrived at, what are we at, 488, whatever the number is? That was the number that was chosen, and then we backed into our financing plan accordingly to construct what you see out there on the ground today.
Thank you very much. I guess the thing that I, you know, another issue, or not issue, but hurdle I have, I'm trying to overcome, is that the end of this Frog parking analysis, to me, there's really two options. It's pay for parking or enforce fines upon Temecula residents, whether it be overnight parking, residents parking too long, 24-hour parking, those mitigation measures. Is there, I guess besides that possibility in the future, is there anything else that the Frog data analysis can provide us? Or is the end result a paid-for parking system with easier enforcement actions on behalf of the city?
Well, there are other things you can do before you get to paid parking. You can go to timed parking. Maybe you do two hours or three hours. We saw most people only park an hour. Maybe two hours is the cutoff. You make a two-hour parking or one-hour parking, whatever it is. And that way, that kind of helps things, people turn up, those spaces turn over, if you will. You can do that before you get to the paid parking.
And that for me, you know, that, I guess that is, that goes back to the enforcement part, where you have two to three hours. And if that resident doesn't move in two to three hours, then they get the fine on them from the city.
Those are things, that's what I mentioned in the presentation, is, you know, there's going to be enforcement that has to be done. How is that, how is that covered? Who's doing that? Those are all things that have to be considered if the council wants to move forward with something like that.
Yeah, I just want to be abundantly clear. We are not predetermining tonight that we are going down to paid parking for Old Town. We're, we're just not. Tonight's agenda item is solely related to Part Two of data collection, which will lay the groundwork for future decisions. That could be one of the decisions, or it could never be one of the decisions. But there's a multitude of decision trees that can come off of, once you have 100 percent of the data for all public parking inventory in Old Town. And we think we can make good decisions, better decisions with, with, with data.
No, absolutely. I completely understand that, Mr. City Manager. The, I guess, you know, the hurdle that I'm having is that this policy decision that we make tonight lays the groundwork for a paid-for parking, more easily enforced, fine system on behalf of the city.
Okay, well, that's, that's your opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I respectfully disagree. I, I think this is an exercise in data collection, so we can really not base any policy decisions or operational decisions on anecdotal or narrative evidence, but we can rather point to something that says, absolutely, there's a problem. It's between these hours, it's on these days, it's 24/7, it's three days a week, it's never at all, and we can plan accordingly as planners, as city government people, to sort of find solutions that may or may not look like paid parking. That is still another option.
No, absolutely. And I think I totally understand your disagreements, and the only proof to that would be to foreshadow a decade or two out and see if there's paid-for parking in the city of Temecula. And then we can come back to this October 28th, 2025 City Council meeting. But that is really my main questions. Does anyone, Mayor Potem, do you have something? All right, no more questions of city staff. Thank you very much for answering all my questions.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Do we have any public comments on the matter?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have one public comment. Mr. Neil Cleveland. Sir, this is a business item, so you have up to five minutes.
Welcome, Mr. Cleveland.
This is lengthy, so I'm going to probably go through it fast. I appreciate the opportunity. My name's Neil Cleveland. I'm a managing partner of First and Front, who owns the Stampede Building. We're not the tenant. My address is 28046 Del Rio Road, Suite C. We've owned the Stampede Building nearly 35 years. I've been following the Frog Parking Study since its inception. There are many letters of record from me to the city pertaining to Old Town parking. Once the city launched their no parking requirements, except for certain usages like motels and apartments, development has taken off and done well in Old Town. One of the big questions is what does the future look like for parking in Old Town? I support Phase Two Frog Parking Study, provided the residential parking is addressed and city seeks solutions and remedies to the residential parking problems. With the success of apartment buildings in Old Town, triggered in part by loosening parking requirements to only one parking space per dwelling unit, has overburdened available public parking designed and dedicated for businesses and their customers. As a result, apartment buildings are underparked. Public parking was never promoted by the city to satisfy the residential component in Old Town. Something must be done to address this issue going forward. Some background, I hope, will be helpful. First and Front sold the parking lot, sometimes referred to the parking lot or the Roger Epperson Public Parking Lot, to the city, but reserve rights associated with the use and availability of parking that serves the adjacent party or property. These rights are set forth in a parking agreement that runs in favor of First and Front's property in perpetuity. The agreement is, if the agreement is violated, F and, First and Front has remedies. With that in mind, I request the city to address a growing issue that, if not addressed, may restrict and diminish parking, which would violate the parking agreement. Let me explain. Apparently, due to high rents and other factors, residents at Old, in Old Town are now subleasing rooms, and each roommate, like, he owns a car. So there has been an increase in residential parking demand, where parking spaces are being used daytime and nighttime to accommodate residents to the detriment of businesses and their customers who generate the tax revenue that keeps the city of Temecula funded. Regardless of Phase Two Frog Parking Study and other demands of parking, there is an existing agreement that needs to be followed regarding the parking lot. This parking agreement is between the city and First and Front. The parking agreement encumbers public parking lot behind the Stampede and Bailey's Building. The parking agreement requires the city not to diminish parking. Our ownership has been patiently waiting for the city to resolve and correct the diminishment of the parking and parking lot because of the residential parking demand. Aside from Phase One, we see no concrete actions taken by the city to address the resulting diminished parking. The city is contractually obligated under parking agreement with First and Front not to enact policies that restrict, diminish available parking for First and Front and its tenants. There must be a solution and remedy that, when materialized, will satisfy the condition of the parking agreement. First and Front, the public, business owners and stakeholders should not be required to subsidize parking to meet the parking needs in the residential components of Old Town. The existence of the parking agreement requires the city to treat parking, the parking lot differently from the other parking lots. Allowing daytime and overnight residential parking at this facility must stop. I know of no other parking agreements in Old Town. We remain patient, yet regardless of the outcome of the parking study, the parking agreement must be reviewed, and the city must actively address those developing conditions that trigger noncompliance associated with the residential parking on the lot. We have been cooperative and patient, but the city must develop an effective solution regarding residential parking. The last thing First and Front wants to do is exercise remedies granted to it under the parking lot or parking agreement. The city must take concrete efforts to implement an effective solution that addresses the underparked Old Town, starting with the removal of the residential parking from the parking lot and relocating it elsewhere. I remain open to constructive discussions and look forward to working with the city for a solution. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I'm sure we will have lots of questions, but this is not that forum for questions from you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments on this item.
Thank you very much. On that public comment, would it be possible just to get a staff overview of the diminishing parking in the parking agreement that we have with them? That we can top to speed? And I will have lots of questions for you, sir. So thank you very much. All right, no further public comments. Let's have some discussion on Frog.
I'll go.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, well, I'm definitely in favor of the Phase Two, because, I mean, as we saw, it was 88 parking spaces along Front Street, which is the most used parking spaces in all of Old Town Temecula. So it doesn't surprise me that we have a very high number of parking spaces being utilized. But I think in Frog Two, it's definitely going to show us there's a lot of unutilized spaces in our parking structure and, you know, some of our others. So, and we need that data to make an educated decision as far as what, what is necessary. And so I'm definitely in favor of it, and, yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much. Mayor Potem?
All righty, well, thank you. And Mayor, I just want to, I want to let you know, I hear what you're saying. I understand. I have to tell you, I'm in favor of this. We've done Phase One, knowing that we were going to go into Phase Two more than likely. And we want to get a full understanding of what we're about to step into. You know, I had the opportunity on October 9th. I was actually over the Cal Cities Conference. And I made my way into this, one of the classes called, "How Effective Parking Management Fuels Urban Success." And it really gave me a really good understanding, listening to Dixon Resources Unlimited, and also listening to one of the police captains over there, or the police captain from the city of Seal Beach, and just understanding that how data can really make or break parking. And it was very successful for them and their, and their area and their, for their city. But one of the things that really jumped out at me is the fact that there was a city that Dixon was talking about that they ended up putting in a parking structure without data. And because they did that, nobody used the parking structure. So they spent all this money, and they didn't have the data to back it up. And so it was just, it was a waste of money for that city. So I think, if anything, the four of us, the five of us are definitely data-driven. You know, and I figure, I think we owe it to the community. I, I know that there is a lot of concern and just questions about things. And we already can see that every hour, as, as our staff was talking about, there's a high turnover. And if we, this can really impact businesses in the long run, I believe, if we do not do our due diligence by doing the entire analysis on, on Frog for Phase Two. And let's see, what else did I put down here? You know, I, I know that a lot of people, it's, it's your concerns, other people's concern. I've had the concern myself, where is this going to go? Is this going to go to paid parking? Again, as the city manager said, and what I believe as well is looking at this, the agenda item, it's specifically with data. But we have to pull off the Band-Aid to see really what's going on. If we don't, we can't really do our due diligence and do a good job of making policy and moving forward for our city and our residents and our businesses, I believe, if we do not do this parking analysis. So I, I think, and it might surprise us to where we then can say to our constituents, hey, we did the analysis, we don't need it. Or, hey, we did the analysis, what is going to be the best way that we can move forward for you and for our city to, to continue to thrive? So we've had, we also had a great opportunity, I think, today as well, to talk about, you know, public and private parking lots. And so I know that's going to be coming down the pipeline as well. So I'm just excited that we're having this discussion instead of kind of trying to put it under a basket and go, ah, we don't want to talk about that, because it is uncomfortable. You know, during this, during this conference, one of the things that they were talking about, which is really interesting, is, you know, why is parking such a hottie debate? And if it is so important, then, important, why is parking so controversial? It's because it's political to a point where, you know, we're talking about other people's money, and there's so much into it. But I believe that we can make the right decision. We just need to really continue to look for all the data to be able to make that, that move forward or not. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Potem. Councilmember Schmack?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I won't belabor it too much, because I'm certainly in support of this. Mayor Potem Alexander and I are on Old Town Steering, and we've had this item a couple times over the course of the last little bit. We've heard from Neil a couple times. He's come into our meetings as well, and we've listened to his concerns with that. You know, I'll try to stick just to the agenda item, because we're not talking about paid parking here. And the, the idea was never to not do Phase Two, right? You wouldn't do 88 spaces unless there was something deficient with the product. And that was the point of Phase One. Let's do 88 spaces. Does it work? Does it work like we want it to work? What are some issues? And Eric, you brought up, it's like, oh, hey, we learned some things in the process. That's the whole point of it, right? Is to learn about it. You know, there's 1,400 spaces in Old Town? Public, public parking spaces in Old Town? So I think, you know, you can imagine a world where those graphs will look a little bit different, right? I, too, didn't believe it. I had access to the backend, the, the slide that you showed with, was like the real-time data. And Eric, while I'm talking, if you could pull up the full slide that shows the 88 plus the, like, all the parking? I think you had like a large map. Yeah, yeah. So I didn't believe the backend did it either. And I was like, okay, I'm going out there, you know? And I had my phone up, and I was, you know, driving through Old Town, and, and you could see, oh, that space is empty. And then you would see, like, someone pull out, and it would change from, you know, red to green and things like that. So I think the system's pretty reliable. Even, you know, some of the holes you're, you're trying to poke in it with, like, the rod run and stuff, like, you know, people left early, or, you know, like, whatever. It was a motorcycle, or someone had their lawn chairs in it or whatever. I think that the data itself is, the system itself is pretty reliable. Can you show the one with all the parking, the public parking? You had a larger map that had everything. It was like the Phase Two part?
Yes.
Because I think it's like the scope of it. And so that's, this is my point. So if you look at Phase One, just Front Street, and look at all the parking, right? You've got Penny Pickles, you've got the theater, you've got the Epperson Lot, you know, you've got the Sixth Street Lot, you've got the lots in front of City Hall here, you've got the parking structure. One, one thing that I think will be the most important, and Eric, you had a slide that was sort of like, it would inform us for residential permits. It would inform us for many, many things. But I think the most valuable tool will be the, the app that people can use to see in real time. And the city of Laguna Beach has a real-time app where you can open it up, and you can look and say, oh, I want to go get whatever the restaurant is, even like a, a type of restaurant. I want to get Mexican food. And you type it in, and it'll, it'll point you to the businesses and then the nearest available parking. So that in and of itself will help a ton. And I think that will be like some of the most valuable tools, is that, that real time. We have it now. It's, it's not, it's not the same, right? What we have in the real-time data now. So I think that will be the biggest issue, right? Like, hey, I'm going to, I'm coming into Old Town, where's the parking? And you just drive right there. So it'll reduce some of that circling that you're talking about, where people are circling around. around. You know, council years ago made a pretty bold decision to not have parking minimums in Old Town. That was for the era and for where we, where we are geographically, that's a big deal to do that. And had they sort of said like, no, you know, we need to have parking minimums, we would have a much different Old Town. Surface parking lots in front, you know, it'd be very suburban-looking and it wouldn't be very pedestrian-friendly and walkable. So, I think this is a part, this is sort of that crossroads where we can also make this decision and say like, hey, we need more information. It would be akin to taking the community survey and just being like, well, I scrolled through Facebook and, you know, like, no, we went out and we did a statistically valid survey. We have real good data, we know what people think. And this, I think, gives us that, that information. Now, what future councils do with it, that's on them, right? But at this point, having the information, I think, is so key. And I'm, and I'm really glad that it is a staff recommendation, because over the years we've talked about, you know, like trusting staff and professional staff and listening and saying like, hey, this is a staff recommendation. And I think, I think it would be a very firm staff recommendation that this is really important to inform our decisions from a planning and economic development perspective going forward. So, I'm fully supportive of this.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Schwenk. No, I, just so you know, I completely understand with the data-driven analysis, I truly do. I guess my question is, and we have to start, because right, we're saying, hey, the Agenda Item is, doesn't, has nothing to do with paid-for parking, has nothing to do with enforcement, totally understand that. But we also talk about, this data is going to give us the ability to make decisions and policy decisions in the future. So, it is both at the same time, right? It is, it is a decision tonight to approve Pilot Phase Two, but at the same time, we all are agreeing that it's going to give future councils or us next year, ability to make future policy decisions. So, the Agenda Item may be different than the, you know, future decisions that policy make. And I guess a big thing for me is, there's really, I mean, there's a whole myriad of options that happen that we'll see from this data. But say that it comes back and, like the data in the eighty-eight spots, where we were over the threshold of eighty-five percent for the parking limit, at that time, would, like, if we go back to the analysis, the eighty-eight, and it was the totality of the twelve hundred parking spots we have in Temecula, would that be enough to say that we need more parking? Is that the, the objective data that we're looking for? Because I'm just trying to think of the objective results that we're going to get, right? And one of those is the eighty-five percent threshold. At that point, if it was above the eighty-five percent threshold, X amount of days a month, is that what we would look for or a future council would look for to make a decision on whether a parking structure or more parking is needed?
Yeah, that eighty-five, that eighty-five percent threshold, that's what kind of drives you having to decide to do something about the parking. Like I said earlier, you know, you'd go to, you would typically go to timed parking before you'd even go to building a parking structure or making people pay for parking. There's things you can do before to try to manage the supply that you have more efficiently.
And maybe the Frog individuals, is there a system that Frog has put in place similar to this, where the end result in five to ten years' time has not resulted in paid-for parking in the city that they are in?
I'd have to ask them that question, I don't know.
Yeah, if they could answer that, that would be great. I mean, I spoke to the Laguna Beach mayor multiple times regarding the Frog parking. You can come up, man, while I'm talking. And of course, Laguna Beach is a paid-for parking system. And speaking with the mayor and a few of the staff members there, hi. They were saying that, good, how are you? They were saying that the Frog data, without a paid-for system, they didn't understand the benefit.
Yeah, so, nice to see you guys again. I'm Sharina, I'm the CEO of Frog. I flew up from New Zealand to be here today. Over there, you've got my CTO and my COO, so both of them are from New Zealand.
Thank you.
So, yeah, interesting, what you've got here is a tool to make decisions. You don't have a tool to necessarily put in paid parking. So, for example, the city of Walnut Creek, I don't know if some of you guys know that city, it's in Northern California, they used our data to do things like time-based parking. So, you could say, well, in this area, you know, I know that you guys have got two-point-five percent of your parkers parking for over eight hours in the spaces that we did. What you could say is, for those spaces, let's make them time-limited and then just control that behavior. So, you don't have to issue citations either, you can just issue warnings. So, you can say, hey, we know you've, like, you can go down that row of spaces and say, hey, we know you've been here eight hours. Clearly, you're, you know, a resident or you're working in one of these cafes and you shouldn't be here this long, so we're watching you. It's that kind of vibe. The other thing you can do is you can introduce that app where you're just showing people where availability is in other locations. So, if you look at this Phase Two for the other locations, you might see that it's not busy in one of the other locations. And you might show that on the app and say, well, look, over here, we're at eighty-five percent, but over here, we're at thirty-five percent. So, you know, if you click on the app, it's going to take you, say, eight minutes to get there, as opposed to three minutes to get here. Like, you can just control where these people need to be. Another thing you guys could do, which is, might be controversial, but is LED signage. I know in Old Towns, Old Towns don't like LED signage, but we can make them look really nice so that the housing and everything is like within your aesthetic. And then you can say, look, there's thirty-three spaces down this way, but over here, there's a hundred and forty-four. You know, and you can do that with rooftops. So, in your garages, one huge thing is like, no one wants to park on the rooftop. So, what you could do is say, like, if you're a resident or if you're an employee, go up to that rooftop, you know, you already registered on the app, so we know who you are, there's, you know, that whole rooftop's empty, go park there, and then you leave those other spaces available for people who want to go to the retail. Like, bigger picture, if you're going to do the app, it's about that visibility, but also we could integrate with things like the wineries, we can integrate with Uber and Lyft, so you can have curbside pickup and drop-off, which we've done at the City of Laguna Beach. You, we could integrate with like the trolleys and the trams. So, like, if you've got those in the city, we can watch them and we know where they are. So, we can say, well, why don't you guys go and park way over there and jump on a trolley or a tram, and we'll give you a ride into the city. So, I guess it's about controlling behavior. It's not so much about implementing paid parking, but if you ever wanted to, the app can take paid parking, Google Pay, Apple Pay, mobile wallet, plus we have solar-powered kiosks that can go on the street. But you don't have to do that. It's like, yeah, you can, you can basically, we have an Alacart menu of products, and you can start with something, look at the data. I would put in the mobile app if I was Temecula, because it's cool, it's going to be your branded, you know, everything is going to have your stores on it, you know, for the retailers. We can make sure, we say, if you're a resident, we don't want you parking here, we want you parking over there. And then we can pull reports on that. So, that's kind of a nice way to start. And then, yeah, signage, if you ever want to, LED signage is really good for controlling traffic flow. Yeah, I don't know if I've missed anything from Walnut Creek, but yeah, there's, there's lots of use cases, it just depends on what you want. And when you're buying our system, you're buying our team of software engineers. So, we've got like seven software developers that will come and sit down with you guys and figure out what you want. So, it's not like a, we want it this way, it's out of the box, here you go. It's like, we want to partner with you guys, we'll build you what you want. It's no extra cost, like, we're throwing in all of these things for Temecula, because we want to work with you guys. So, yeah, like, over time, we can evolve with you as your needs change. So, yeah.
Well, thank you very much for that. No, ironically, I lived in Walnut Creek.
Oh, yeah.
For two years, yes. I was up there for two years, so very familiar with Walnut Creek. Is Walnut Creek one of the cities that does not implement paid-for parking?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they did AGEN. Yeah, they didn't do paid parking. They did do the mobile app, they did do sensors for availability. Availability on the website's also a good one, like City of Temecula website, you're going to have availability on there. And then, yeah, just monitoring that data. So, yeah, Walnut Creek's a good one, a premium, like, Old Town kind of like this, you know?
Absolutely. And in regards to the, you know, the end results of this, if it shows that we are less than the eighty-five percent threshold, is the way to utilize the Frog technology in the app, is that the way that, you know, if we don't need more parking, that is the way that Frog is saying that we would be able to utilize the empty parking spaces?
Yeah.
By knowing which ones are free, an individual would have to use the app to know how to get there, is that fair to say?
Yeah, like, implementing paid parking in a small town like this, because of sometimes you get like community uproar, it's like a last resort. And it's only if you really want to generate revenue, as opposed to, you know, control traffic flow. So, if you want to control traffic flow and have parks available for people wanting to spend money in the city, then the app's a perfect way to go. Because you're not, you know, you're not just going, right, it's paid parking now, end of story. You're going, let's gather another layer of data, which is user behavior. And, you know, controlling traffic flow, reducing circling, fits in with sustainability strategies. So, it's, yeah, that kind of a vibe, as opposed to the heavy-handed paid parking.
Absolutely. And this may be a staff question, but, and I keep going back to the eighty-five percent threshold, if it were to come to the conclusion that we needed more parking, how much would it cost to put in a similar parking structure to the one we have right next to us this day and age?
Well, I don't have any, you know, data at hand, but I have heard figures of fifty thousand dollars a space.
Yeah, me too. Especially because you want to make sure that they are compatible with the potential and the future for autonomous vehicles. So, you may need less parking asset as the autonomous vehicle stacks in a parking garage because they have no driver. So, yeah, because often the garages that they're building now that I've seen with the architects, they can be converted into offices at a later stage. So, yeah, with things changing, it's never our recommendation to build a parking garage at fifty-three thousand US dollars a space, unless you really have to.
Got it. And a similar parking structure to four hundred spaces would be roughly twenty to twenty-five million dollars. And would it be fair to say that there would be no way to pay for a parking structure without implementing some sort of paid-for parking system?
That'd ultimately be a policy decision. I mean, you could do some type of bond financing, you know, go into some level of debt, some cash down and finance the balance. So, there, there's other options available if you, if the council wanted to prioritize a public parking garage and, and put as much cash into it. And with, you'd make the decision upfront if you were going to pay parking to sort of recover your investment or not, I would imagine. That'd be a policy decision by this board. But there's other ways to finance capital projects and maintain free parking as well. I mean, it's not unheard of, too.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much for traveling all the way out here and answering all of our questions.
No worries. If you have any questions on like delivery or the technology, the two blocks over there can help you out as well.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add something, if you don't mind. So, we had an Old Town Steering Committee meeting this morning, Mayor Protam and myself, and the topic was the paid-for, private paid-for parking lots. And we've been receiving some complaints. So, paid parking exists down here, right? But it's really the Wild West of paid parking. And the fees are all over the place, the fines are all over the place. And one of the things that we felt coming out of that meeting, coming into this meeting, was having the availability of the data will help inform people, residents especially, because what we're hearing from business owners is, it's not the tourists that are upset about the paid parking, it's the residents that are upset about it. And one, one woman spoke that she's frustrated enough that she contemplates moving her business from Old Town because of like all the issues surrounding the private paid lots, where she was saying, she's even paid for some of the fines that people have gotten, because it's so frustrating to them. So, again, I'll go back to, this data will help the residents be informed about where to park. And, yeah, to your point about, you know, paid parking, it's like, do I, I really want to spend twenty, twenty-five million dollars on a parking lot, or, sorry, a parking structure if we don't really know what the demand is? So, let's, let's learn what that demand is. And whether it's this council or a future council, they'll at least have the information at hand. But to be clear, and you've honed in on the paid parking lot, I'm going to speak for myself and I'm not going to speak for anyone else, but I don't want paid parking down here either, right? So, I'm just going to be clear about that. Like, no one's advocating for paid parking. Now, paid parking would do some things, it would push up against some of the private lots, and it would, it would create a market where it's a more competitive market. But that's not where I'm headed. The data will inform our decisions going forward. And like I said, I, I feel like the balance of this council is, is not for implementing some sort of paid parking in Old Town. But without these sensors, we don't know what's going on down here. So, I think it's, I think it's important we do it.
Councilmember Stu?
Yeah, and the whole app, as Zach brought up, to me, is a crucial part of this Frog technology, because one of the main complaints I hear from people who are coming to Old Town is, they're not coming, the locals aren't coming to Old Town, because they're always complaining, I can never find a place to park. And so, if, if this app can actually provide a local the ability to say, there's actually sixty spots available in Old Town, I'm going to go have dinner in Old Town, I think that, that's going to benefit the businesses down here, and it enhances our lives. I mean, Old Town to me is, is a really special place. And so, parking is, is something I'm really concerned about, but I really do believe it's a, it's a issue of not being aware where to park. And so, so that's where the app would come into play, where it can show you exactly, go to the parking garage and walk two blocks to the restaurant, and you're going to, you know, find a parking space, no problem, you know? Or the Sixth Street parking lot, or the Stampede parking lot. So, so there's, this, this app could be, to me, a really, really good thing for Old Town, Temecula. So, that's why, that's another reason why I believe we need to implement this Phase Two, is to be able to get that app and get that data necessary to keep our businesses in Old Town thriving. So, again, so supportive.
Yep. No, I totally understand that, Stu. And again, this just comes down to a fundamental just disagreement on, I guess this in totality. And I know that it sounds like no one up here is for paid-for parking, I know I keep saying that, so let's just leave that out of it and say that we're not for paid-for parking. I am just arguing that this has an opportunity to lay the groundwork for that in the future to make a future council decision on a paid-for parking system. I also, I guess I just, again, fundamentally disagree with the, the usage of an app. I think people, the younger generation, I guess I can speak on behalf of them a little bit, is that we don't really use parking apps. It's just, we don't. And especially in a small, small area like Old Town, if you're going to come to Old Town and eat, you're going to come to Old Town, you're going to eat, and you're going to drive around, you're going to look for a parking spot. And if you can't find a parking spot, you're not going to just drive down Front Street and leave, you're going to drive down Second Street, Third Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Sixth Street, you're going to drive through, and at that point, that we decide not to spend our day in Old Town. And I think, I think there will be a lack of usage of the app for residences here. I just don't think it'll be utilized. But again, I hope I am wrong on all of this. I genuinely hope that the app is widely utilized. I hope this solves our parking issues throughout Old Town. I truly do. And I truly hope that I am wrong with the Frog parking. The one last thing I'll disagree on is the private lots. I don't think this analysis will show us anything in regards to the private lots, because there's no sensors on those private lots. We already know how many there are, we already know how many spots there are in the private lots, and we already know it's the Wild West with the private parking lots today without this data. And we can make policy decisions today regarding those private lots and how to further mitigate the issues that they are bringing to businesses and residents in Old Town. Because I agree, I've spoken to business owners that don't own the property that those private lots are in front of, and they are frustrated as well. But it's not the businesses that are implementing, it's the property owners that are implementing the private lots. But we can do something regarding those today without the Frog analysis data. Councilmember Schwenk?
Yeah, to that point, that was a direction from the Subcommittee today. And we recognize we're not putting sensors in these lots, but to work with OTTA, send that item to OTLAC and come up with a solution. So, yeah, we're on it. I think this is complimentary to that discussion, right? And I think it helps in the long run.
Absolutely. Well, thank you all and to my colleagues for the discussion. I thoroughly appreciate it, and I totally understand where you're coming from, even if we disagree at the end of the day. I will entertain a motion and a second to move this item forward.
Motion.
Second. That has been moved and the second.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, before the votes cast, can I just get clarity from Matt Peters or Eric? That with respect to the app technology, I just want to go on the record, that is an optional financial package versus the Phase Two of the sensors going into the balance of Old Town parking. Eric, do you mind speaking to that real quick? And I, I think I understand, and I want to make sure the council understands and that expectations are set clearly, if directions given to create, sort of do the Phase Two, but also roll out a forward-facing app on the backend, I believe there's the dollars associated with that available in the contingency of the contract that's in front of the council this evening. But can you please confirm and just speak to that, so it's not something that would But can you please confirm and just speak to that so it's not something that would come back at a later date or anything like that?
Yeah, sure. So what we're proposing today is to enact phase two, which is all the parking centers you saw on that map. And as Aaron was saying, if you wanted to do the app for residents and visitors and whatnot, that's a separate cost, that's a separate issue you'd have to tack on. That's not what's in the contract right now. But if you decide to move forward with that, we do have plenty of money left in the contingency to move forward with that, if you decide that's what you want to do.
Thank you very much. And on that, is there any reason after retaining this data from Frog that someone would not use the app? Or would you say most use the app after getting the data back? Because if you just get the data with no way to direct people to the parking spots that are available, most people get the app?
Yeah, I'd bring you up, I'd talk about your experience. You gotta come to the, you gotta come to the mic.
That way, those seventeen people watching on YouTube can hear you as well. It's live. You're doing it live.
So in the city of Laguna Beach, we have about six hundred thousand downloads of the app. Sixty-eight thousand people use it in the summer on a, you know, in sort of a three-day period, so it's quite widely used. The app would be really cool if you wanted to go ahead with it. But yeah, there is, so in terms of the provision, we've provided an option for the app. It's not part of phase two, it's kind of phase three. Does that make sense?
Yes. After phase two, implement phase three, similar to phase one?
Yeah, and another thing you can do is you can put the availability on the website instead. So if you don't want the mobile app, people can just go on their phone and look on the city of Temecula and click on your website instead. So that might help you.
Absolutely. Could you speak, excuse me, could you speak to the cost of adding the app? I think you provided a quote to us today.
Yeah, I think it's like an annual software fee.
As I recall, that cost to add the app was nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Yes, was that the setup fee? That's the setup and the annual combined. So it's kind of cheap as chips.
Budget dust, as some would say.
Don't ever say that again, please.
All right, thank you very much. Any further questions?
I just want to clarify that that's in your motion and that's in your second, that the app component is.
Her motion.
Sorry, your motion, your second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes.
Like, on the app, you can give it a go. You don't have to launch it. We can give you a test version.
All right, let us vote. Thank you very much for coming. Hope you have safe travels back.
No worries. Thanks for having us.
Absolutely. And item number twenty-two passes three to one with myself voting no. All right, with that, we will flip back to the front of our agenda here. And we will wait for Councilmember Ron to come back on to our dais here. All right, we will move on to our board and commission reports. We have our planning commissioner here, Mrs. Laine Trulie-Trejo. Welcome.
Hi, glad to be here. Yes, I am representing the planning commission. And we, for those in the audience, we do meet on the first and third Wednesday evenings at 6:00 PM right here. And our last meeting was last week, last week? Anyway, October fifteenth. It's almost November. It's really crazy. And we have five of us on the commission. I am the chair. Our vice chair is Gary Watts. And I'm really happy to see him in the audience tonight. He just left, but really glad that he's here. Anyway, glad that he's back. And we have Bob Hagel, Fernando Solis, and Mark Watson. So we take care of, if we can go back, yeah. So just for those that are in the audience and are curious on what we do, we make recommendations on subdivisions, specific plans, zone changes. And we also are required to have public hearings. So we are a statutory planning agency for the city. Thank you. Next slide. So at our last meeting, we had a city council, well, we had a CIP workshop that we had had before with the city council. And so for this meeting, we actually reviewed the amendments to that for the capital improvement program and that it was consistent with the general plan. So there was one public comment via email, and there were eight public speakers for this item. And the emailed comment and speakers were all in opposition to the widening of the La Paz Road being included in the CIP projects that are identified for future years. So at the meeting, it was explained that was not on the agenda, we're not doing anything with that. But they were speaking that they wanted it removed, period, to the general plan. So with that, the commission voted four-zero to approve the application, which at this point has nothing to do with the La Paz Road being widened, just to clarify. Okay. And next slide, please. And then we reviewed an ordinance amending chapter seventeen for more clarity regarding off-premises sign standards. And there were no public speakers on this item. And we voted four-zero to recommend the city council adopt this amendment to chapter seventeen. Next slide, please. And then we also reviewed an ordinance amending chapters five, eight, and seventeen of the municipal code to include permitting requirements and operational standards to allow for one delivery-only medicinal cannabis retailer. There were no public speakers for this item, and the commission voted three-one to recommend city council adoption of the ordinance. Next slide. I think that's it. If you have any questions for me on any of those items? You could listen to the meeting, it was kind of fun. So it was an interesting one. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will definitely re-watch that planning commission meeting soon. We will move on to our public safety report with our fire chief, John Crater.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and Temecula residents. For the month of September two thousand twenty-five, Temecula firefighters ran nine hundred and nine calls in the city limits, eleven of those being fires and fifty-eight traffic collisions. And year-to-date, we're at seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-six calls for service. Next slide. We did fire prevention week, open house actually, at Station ninety-five and Station twelve. But here's some pictures from that. I'd like to thank our prevention folks here in the city, staff, and PIO office, and also our explorer program. If you don't know, we have an explorer program at Station ninety-five for kids fourteen to eighteen years old. We're always taking applications, and yeah, they help out a lot. Plus, they get trained and see if they want to be a future firefighter for us. And you could see the kids there, they always enjoy that. We had a couple hundred folks attend at Station ninety-five, and it was really nice to see the community, meet the community, fill a lot of questions, and then also give some good advice and best practices for home safety. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. Seeing no questions, we will move on to our public comments on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one public comment on a non-agendized item, and the public commenter is Ross Jackson. Mr. Jackson, you have three minutes.
Welcome, Mr. Jackson.
Good afternoon, council. On behalf of OTTA, Ross Jackson, the vice chairman, I would like to address an upcoming event that's been approved by the city and sponsored by VTV. And this regards to December twelfth to December thirteenth. It's the holiday, Temecula Old Fashioned Holiday Event. And I might have that name incorrect, but we're in progress. So we just, today just got the paperwork signed. And so we're working on the agenda and the event itself. We are very pleased to be working with the city in regards to this. This has been a long time coming. On my part, it's a holiday event that's gonna bring a lot of families down. Basically, it starts on December tenth, which is our restaurant crawl, basically, for all of the local restaurants to get an influx of new patrons. Thursday is our boutique crawl, which is, again, has been a widely accepted and a major shot in the arm for all of these local boutiques as well in town. Friday is gonna be an infamous kind of rod run, drive-through, you know, carolers. We're gonna have some costumed carolers walk in the streets for a couple hours on Friday night, along as we'll have a Santa location as well. Saturday is the big event, whereas we're gonna have four hours of carolers and four hours of a Santa Claus located directly in front of the, our hope is to, directly in front of the fountain in, right in front of City Hall here. It's, what more can I say? Is thank you very much for being supportive to this idea, and we're looking forward to many more years of this coming up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jackson. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any further speakers on non-agendized items. I did want to put it on your radar that we do have one public speaker on the consent calendar, and that's consent calendar item number thirteen when we get there.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we will move on to our city council reports. And my colleagues have any, Councilmember Swain?
Sure, I'll go ahead and go. So I was joined recently by Mayor Protam down here in Old Town. Oh, we'll do Sister City first, sorry. My bad. So we're having a Sister City delegation, so our Dyson friends are coming to Temecula. And we need a few more host families, right? So we're reaching out to the community if you would like to be a host family for our Sister City delegation. It would be wonderful. I had the pleasure of traveling to Japan and was hosted by a family. It is a transformational experience to be able to do that. And so if anyone is able to host one of our, one of our families, it would be much appreciated. And so reach out to temeculascia.gov backslash Sister City, or go ahead and reach out to myself or Community Services if you would like to be a part of that program. Next slide. So the last couple weeks have been insanely busy, and I think it's really cool that I see my colleagues sort of out and about around town, and we're not always able to make everything. I know there was Ride the Vines, there was Battle of the Burgers, there was a film festival, the Greek Fest at the mall. I had an opportunity to visit our friends over at Temecula Valley Pride. They did a pride event, and I presented proclamations that the mayor so graciously signed and provided to this event. So it was Emily Space, Temecula Valley Pride, and Temecula Methodist Church put this on. There was a whole host of vendors, folks from, like, Voices of Children, our CASA advocates were there, Riverside University Health Systems were there. It was a fun event, food and dancing and fun. So that was, that was how I spent a portion of my morning last weekend. Next slide, and we're looking forward to that next year as well. And then, so finally, I had an opportunity to spend some time in Old Town with our OTTA friends, and signage always comes up as an issue. So Mayor Protam and myself went down, and we worked on, there's three kiosks in Old Town that have these old maps that we did a little makeover, so if we could roll the reel. And I think it's a perfect segue for folks that don't use apps to use a physical map. And so now we have three brand-new physical maps in Old Town. In fact, someone actually ran one of them over, the one on the south end of town, and so our Public Works team fixed it, made it stronger than ever, and installed the map. So I want to thank our Public Works team, our planning folks, and everyone else for making that happen and working with OTTA as well to provide some wayfinding here down in Old Town. So that's all. Thank you.
Mayor Protam?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Okay, we're gonna do that one first. Sounds good. All right, so November Veterans Event, lots coming up. Again, we wanted to ensure that we are supporting our veterans, that we are supporting our active-duty military here within our city due to the fact that we have such a large population of individuals, whether they're retired or, again, active duty. So we wanted to be able to celebrate veterans and all of their support for this country and our city as well. So we have the Veterans Pining Ceremony coming up on Wednesday, November fifth, at ten AM. And I believe staff's gonna go a little bit more into detail about that one. Eric, do you want to talk about that one a little bit more?
Sure. So this is an event we do over at our senior center annually. It's a really fantastic event. It's just an opportunity to recommend, to recognize the veterans in our community. And so anybody is welcome to attend, whether you're a veteran or not, and just, you know, enjoy that opportunity to recognize them for their service.
Excellent. And as we go into the patriotic salute to veterans, I'm just gonna kick it back over to you one more time because you have so many details in this and I just, of what's coming up, and I want to make sure we get it right.
Yeah, no problem. So historically, for the last several years, for our patriotic salute to veterans, we've done a symphony concert. And we've been getting some feedback from the community, including the veterans' community, that they'd like to see this sort of restructured in a different way. So this time, we're going to be doing a Veterans Expo, Saturday, November eighth, at ten AM, right out front here. And for anybody who needs any more information, it's available on our website.
Excellent. Thank you so much. See, that was, that was perfect. Thank you. And we'd like everybody to come out, you know, really support our veterans. It's, again, a great way for our community to get out and just do something different. We're hoping possibly even if we get our card to be able to serve, what was it, our, what do they call that card to serve? The food?
The food handler's card.
The food handler's card. So something that Councilmember Zach brought up, that, you know, we'd be behind the barbecue even and just cooking. But our last one is on November thirteenth. Great way to close out some of the activities that we're doing is our Veterans Appreciation Breakfast. This is something I brought up. I've been working with staff and, again, in our military subcommittee to just say thank you to all of our veterans here. Everybody's invited if you're a veteran, and so we just hope that you can come in. Also, we want to extend it out to nonprofits if you work with veterans or have something to do. Example, Milvet, there's another one, Cookouts for Camaraderies, that is gonna be coming as well. So a lot of good nonprofits, a lot of good opportunities to get information for help for them as well, and it should be another great event. I think last year, we filled every seat.
Yes, we did. And for anybody who's interested after our Veterans Appreciation Breakfast, Senator Ciardo will also be hosting a veterans' event after ours later that day, so be sure to check his event out as well.
Absolutely. And again, ours is from eight to ten, and I think his starts from like ten to two or whatever time that is. So it's a back-to-back Veterans Day event. So, thank you. All right, our next one. So this was kind of new, so this is in my district. The Temecula Valley Historical Society had invited me to come over to the Little Temecula History Museum. If you do not know what that is, it is the little red barn that's right next to Kohl's, just right off of, right on Wolf Store Road. And I have to tell you, I was absolutely exhausted walking in there. It was a very busy day for me at work. But they, they brought a speaker to come in, and they do this monthly. And it was a, if you can't see this, it's a Brief History of Southern California Citrus Industry and Hemet. And what this really did is this, the speaker came in and talked about the citrus industry and the history of that on top of the railroad through here through California and what that looked like. So it just gave me a little bit more of an appreciation of our history, our past. And then they have it all decked out with just a lot of historical items and information. So if you haven't been down there to this little cute little history museum, I just want to encourage you, come check it out. There's a lot of great information. And I believe in December seventh, they're having another meeting coming up about, I'm not gonna, I can't say the whole thing of what it is, but it's basically archaeological digs, things coming up that they found and just in general. So if you want, if you like history, I definitely recommend that you come out and check it out. So thank you again to the Temecula Historical Society. And one more. They just keep coming. Last thing is the military care packages. I do not have a total, but we are doing really, really well. I want to thank the over seventy different locations here in Temecula that has decided to come in and support the military care packages. If you do not know what this is, we have come alongside, the city of Temecula has come alongside with Milvet, which creates these care packages that get sent overseas to our active-duty men and women. And we are asking that if our community could drop off some of these types of items to be able to send away to our men and women right now overseas. As a Marine, as a veteran, I will tell you, there is. As a Marine, as a form, as a veteran, I will tell you, there is nothing better than receiving a care package, just with a little note and some of your favorite goodies. They actually get to request things. So if there is, let's say, a Marine that loves Oreos and we have Oreos there basically within the storage, that package will be sent with some of the stuff that they are requesting. So it's just, it's really good way to just support them. Please go to our website right here or the Milvet website and see how you can get involved. If you're interested in volunteering, you can connect with them. And we're also having our big care package event on November 13th, I believe?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, that's right, November 16th. So another thing you can do is sign up over there if you want to join us, it's going to be here in the city. And Marietta is doing the same thing. And to my understanding, Menefee is now getting involved with this because they felt a little left out. So we're trying to grow this thing to bigger areas throughout the valley and see who takes part in it. So I'm just excited to see what the end result is, but we are beating Marietta. So thank you.
Thank you very much and I will see you at the Veterans Appreciation Breakfast. All right, we'll put up the first slide here, it was a busy week. I attended the law enforcement torch run with, there is Lieutenant Pearson from our RSO deputy here in City Hall. And that benefits the Special Olympics. And you can see on the right there, that's me and my daughter with one of the, the Special Olympic Olympians. So it was a pretty awesome event benefiting those individuals. And again, I just want to thank our RSO partners for being a part of that and put that on. And the recruit, the recruit class that is currently going through, they all participated. And they ran all the way from Pachanga through Old Town to Wilson Creek. It was a half marathon. So pretty impressive on the individuals that completed that. So again, thank you to everyone participating in that. The next event I attended was the Michelle's Place Walk of Hope. This is always a tremendous event put on by Michelle's Place. There was thousands of people there for the walk and that just benefits individuals going through cancer or who have survived cancer. And truly an amazing community event. I was happy to be there, a part of Team Temecula. You can see me there with Mayor Warren of Marietta as well. So great event, always love attending that one and look forward to next year's. And lastly here, we do have our General Plan Advisory Committee meetings that are public meetings. We are asking that you go, you attend. Again, they are public, you can speak and you can give your peace of mind into what you believe should be in the most important legal document in our city. So go online, visit that website on your screen right there and you can find all the GPACs meetings. Please go and attend and let your voice be known. All right, with that, we'll move on to our consent calendar. Item number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Item number two, approve action minutes of October 14th, 2025. Item number three, approve listed demands. Item number four, approve city treasurer's report for the period of August 1st, 2025 through August 31st, 2025. Item number five, approve the purchase of four police BMW RTP motorcycles from Long Beach BMW. Item number six, adopt resolution acknowledging receipt of the annual inspection report pursuant to SB 1205. Number seven, approve three-year Microsoft Enterprise renewal agreement with CDWG for Microsoft software licenses. Number eight, approve recommendation for community service funding grant program for fiscal year 2025-26 at the request of subcommittee members Calphus and Schwank. Number nine, approve streetlight public improvement deferral agreement between the city of Temecula and Diaz RE Holdings II LLC for public improvements related to the Tesla Service Center project. Number 10, approve increase in construction contingency for contract with ASAD Holdings LLC DBA Orange Blue General Contractors for Marietta Creek Trail Solar Lights PW 21-13. Item number 11, approved amendment number two to transportation uniform mitigation fee TUMF program, agreement to reimburse TUMF funds with the Western Riverside Council of Governments for the Diaz Road Expansion PW 17-25. Item number 12, approve specifications and authorize the solicitation of construction bids for the Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Transition Plan Implementation ADA Curb Ramp Replacement Phase One PW 24-07. Item number 13, approve temporary street closure for portion of First Street in connection with SB Alter LLC project. Item number 14, receive and file temporary street closures for 2025 Winter Fest events. And that is all we have. Madam City Clerk, I would like to poll item number 13. And prior to voting on that, can we vote on the balance of one through 12 and 14?
Mr. Mayor, we can, with the noted exception of the city attorney who noted at the beginning of this meeting that Councilmember Ron is, is conflicted out of item number 13 and 14. Mr. City Attorney, since item number 14 is not being polled from the agenda, is Mr. Ron eligible to go ahead and vote?
Yes, he is and his vote would be shown as an abstention and he doesn't need to leave the dais, but when item 13 is called, he will need to leave the dais.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. I will entertain a.
I'd like to poll number eight, please.
Polling of number eight. All right, so we will poll number eight and number 13 and we will vote on the balance of the remainder.
Move approval.
Second. That has been motioned and second with eight and 13 being polled. And that passes unanimously five to zero. We will start off with number eight, so Mr. Ron can stay on for this. And that is approve recommendation for community service funding grant program for fiscal year 2025-26 at the request of myself and Councilmember Schwank. Mayor Protem, would you like a staff report or discussion?
Just discussion if we can. Yeah, no. Just wanted to just pull this for a little bit, just have a little bit of discussion. I know that great work, having been in the subcommittee before, this is not an easy task. I know that a lot of great nonprofits really get help and I want to continue that. I want to see if it'd be possible if we can add one more nonprofit. And that's going to be, I know right now the city is helping our active duty military, but right now there are concerns with the shutdown going on with our current residents right now possibly being affected. Again, we don't know, but I would like to read something. I asked Milvet to kind of tell me what she's seeing on the ground because they do help out with the families there continuously. I don't want to say it's long, but I want to make sure the information gets out so we can just plan accordingly because we can help directly impact the active duty family members here in our city. So it says, "Milvet needs your help. As a nonprofit food pantry serving military families and veterans in the Temecula Valley weekly, Milvet needs urgent needs for those who have served our country, active duty spouses, single parent military households, reservists between deployments and veterans on fixed incomes. Many of those families face food insecurities due to unexpected medical bills, reductions in pay, caregiving responsibilities or cost of housing. Your support," that's us, "can provide nutritious groceries, dignity and relief, relief during difficult times. Together, we can ensure that those who serve do not have a choice between food and other essentials during this difficult time. The potential government shutdown will potentially end SNAP benefits for 22,000 active duty marine, uh, military, 213 National Guard, 102 military veterans. Riverside County, California has the eighth largest population of veterans in the nation and access food is critical." I bring this up because I know just being in the nonprofit world, that there are incredible and wonderful food banks here and we're supporting them. But this is just another way that we can ensure that our active duty military who's here in Temecula is not going to suffer if this even affects them. We really don't know, there are so many things up in the air, but I'd rather help them and support them with the families here in our city than maybe not at all. So I'm requesting to see if we can talk about if this is something we can put on the table and the amount that we would want to be able to support them with.
Absolutely. I would, does staff have the list in totality of the nonprofits that we decided to in that subcommittee so we can just go through?
Yeah, it's part of the staff report.
Thank you.
Betsy, I don't know, you can, you can run through it. And I just, before Betsy goes, just to remind the council, the subcommittee, I think had about 77,500 worth of recommendations for nonprofits. Our budget was 90 and so there is a little bit of capacity there if the full council wants to make any adjustments or make any adds or deletions tonight. So I'll turn it over to Bets.
If I can just add one, I'm so sorry, I appreciate you. I just want to say first off, um, thank you for that because I know there's some, some wiggle room and I just want to thank the council members that are on there to try to be very diligent with the money that we have. So I appreciate that and so that was it. Thank you, sorry, Betsy, go ahead.
Sure, would you like a full staff report on this program just for the benefit of the community? Sure, okay. So it's a privilege to present an overview of the city's annual community service funding program and the recommendations related to the ad hoc, to, of the related ad hoc subcommittee comprised of Mayor Calphus and Councilmember Schwank. The city's community service funding grant program provides up to $5,000 for charitable programs or services offered by local nonprofit organizations that benefit the city of Temecula residents. The annual budget, as Erin mentioned, was reduced this year slightly from 100,000 to 90,000. So some nonprofits may notice a decrease from last year. The applications period was open for two months, closing in mid-September. The city received a total of 48 applications requesting combined total of 237,000 dollars. The subcommittee reviewed each of the applications together with staff and you'll see them on the next three slides. That were, those, those are the nonprofits that were selected. After careful consideration, the recommendation grants, provides grants between $2,500 and 5,000 to various charitable programs. Each of the recommended organizations are listed again here on the screen and on the next two slides, they are also listed in the summary sheet attached to the staff report. The recommendation made by the subcommittee is to fund 22 nonprofit programs totaling 77,500. And again, that leaves 12,500 on the, on the table.
Can you roll through those three slides a little bit?
Sure, we went pretty quickly, so we'll start there, yeah. Just tell us when you want, you're ready for the next slide.
Good, next one.
Yep, next.
Okay, and then the next one. Okay, thanks.
You bet. I'll just give a little shout out to Stacy Brown who helped put this all together. And I'm happy to answer any of your questions. So yes, Mayor Protem is correct, we did not, Milvet is one of the applicants and they were not funded.
If I can just put this out there, just, and thank you actually, Councilmember Ron for bringing that up as I'm looking at that. Go back to that last slide for me, please. Thank you very much. One. Last one. Is that the last one? The one with Community Mission of Hope on it? There it is. Okay, so just looking at that right there, the Community Mission of Hope, they do an excellent job. I just went over to their, their gala the other day, a lot of great support. And again, you know, we've got plenty of veterans and we got plenty of military family here, active duty. I'd like to see if we can sponsor, if possible, from this council 5,000 specifically for food, for, for veteran families and active duty military who might need it and who do. Because she is, even previously, seeing people coming in from our city who are, who are needing the food. And she's having children in there. And if anything, when we talked about that yesterday, that really definitely did tug on my heart, so.
Councilmember Ron? So you mentioned that information you had was from Milvet?
I asked her. So yesterday, we were actually talking about the boxes, which is totally different. Again, that's community related. That's not something that the city of Temecula is funding for the active duty.
Right.
But this currently would just be here for our city residents directly for food for them.
And two, two quick questions. One was, I'm not familiar with what Milvet's actual application was for, so if the subcommittee might fill us in on that, I appreciate that. Or, or Betsy? Councilmember Schwank?
Yeah, I can fill it in because that was one of the things, I'm glad you brought it up. So like, when we go through this, we, we look at the application. And so specifically their application asked for, it was the Military Care Package program that we're doing. And then it says, "and veteran support program." So it says, "supports active duty deployed service members and veterans in Temecula with military care packages, support and emergency food assistance." We felt, and I'll say, Mayor Calphus probably felt the same way, it's like, we didn't want to put our thumb on the scale with the competition, right?
Absolutely.
With this. But you're sort of bringing up a kind of a separate sort of program, right? And so, you know, in that time, we're really unable to sort of modify it. But my question would be, could Milvet, you know, could they, could we work with Milvet to, to meet the need that you're speaking of?
Absolutely.
Regardless of what their application says?
Absolutely. So there's 12,500, you can take part of that and we can work with Milvet to make the program exactly as you wish. And I know that they would suffice to that. So if that means packages going to the families that are here, active military in the city of Temecula, I know that they would work with us to, to kind of manipulate that program and on the dais here, you can make that decision.
And Betsy, do we have the totality of the other organizations that applied that we had the, you know, option to give grant money to so that the rest of the council can see the, I mean, because all of them are great organizations and we always want to give all of them the max 5,000?
Yes.
I think it would be imperative for the council to. I mean, we got the list.
We have a list.
Yeah, there's a summarized list attached to the staff report. That includes every, all of the, you know, kind of a summary of all the programs and we went through that at the subcommittee, but it's also available at, on the public dais here.
And it also shows not just this funding, but like any additional funding that they've acquired throughout.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a, just a logistics question on this since the, if, if we were to work with Milvet on something like this, their application didn't specify this specific. So is, are we under any constraint given the application process or do we have discretion?
I think we can make the decision, I'll defer to our city attorney, but I think at this moment on the dais, the city council can agree to modify their application to meet your needs. There's been other years that we've modified an application where we've removed things that were applied for, but you didn't want to fund this portion of it. So their application is, is broad-based enough where we can make sure that it is care packages that might be filled with food only or whatever for military families in the city of Temecula.
That's correct.
Absolutely. And, and looking here, and that's exactly what I'm looking at, is providing access for nutritious food items, snacks, hygiene supplies, support, boosting moral support for military families in the city of Temecula. So just that line, I mean, that's key for me, right? You know, is it something, I mean, do we, would we want to do like hygiene? I mean, we only get shampoo. So, I mean, when we're talking about these things, they're not, they're not cheap anymore. But just to be able to give them that support in those areas totally apart from the packages. So I'm not talking about that, but just for the families here in Temecula.
And, and is there anything preventing us from just, instead of saying 5,000, just the balance of the remainder of the 90,000?
I'd say yes, based on tonight's agenda item because the community service program is maxes out at 5,000 per nonprofit. So that, if, I mean, Peter can correct me, but if, if it was desired the council to give the balance, 12,500, that's kind of outside the CS funding. We could, we could probably create something that would be more like a financial sponsorship between the city and Milvet for that purpose. But I, I would assume that, that might have to come at the next council meeting agenda unless, Peter, you tell me differently.
Yes, you'd have to comply with the parameters of the program, which says a maximum of 5,000. So you couldn't go beyond that. If you wanted to do something more, as Erin says, you'd come back with a sponsorship agreement to provide that additional funding for them.
Could we just make that part of the motion then? Yeah, okay. With knowing that, that we can kind of tweak applications, I mean, there's multiple individuals that I would say that are very much deserving of the totality of the 90,000. So if we can go back to the subcommittee and, we would love to fund, I just didn't know we had the ability to alter their applications. Or not alter, but, but work with them to change the verbiage. Because there's many that we went through, it was like, oh, if they would have just changed this or that, we would absolutely, but, so I think, I mean, there's, there's, we know, we all have the pack up, there's special needs children, there's orphans, there's the military vets, there's so many individuals that we wish, we can give all of the money to, the 90,000 dollars. So I would, if Councilmember Schwank would be okay with that, I would be willing to go back to the subcommittee knowing that we could work with these individual groups to see how we can finish the balance of the 90,000 dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the, the feeling that we, we had in the subcommittee meeting was we were being fiscally conservative, you know? We weren't just like putting all the money out there we, we wanted to hang on to and we could roll it over, even though we knew, you know, some, some of the declines, like the budget stuff. And we've talked and we're actually acting on this of like actively getting out of the community and like leaning on the community, you know? And so this is kind of like pushing up against that a little bit. I would feel more comfortable going back to the subcommittee because we passed over a bunch of stuff. If, if, if the direction from you all. If the direction from you all is like, no, we want to, you want to just fund 5,000 to Milvet, okay, well, I guess that's, we should just do that, but if there's other concerns beyond that, then maybe we should go back and to the drawing board or something. I don't know, I would just, I would feel more comfortable if we just did 5,000, kept it in this program, it wasn't another agenda item later, and then, you know, sort of noted in the future, if we're still on the subcommittee, like, these are some of the concerns of our colleagues.
If I can add to, I guess just with me bringing this up, I honestly, and I love your heart, Matt, like, I want to be able to help everybody, right? Talking to Raven, 5,000, I think would be, even 2,500, but sometimes, we don't know what's coming up. If we can do the 5,000, I think that honestly would be sufficient. And then also, we just don't know what's coming down the pipeline, you know, maybe that can kind of be our little reserve stock, if we need to, if there's some of these food pantries, because we have several in our city that can really utilize that as well. So, you know, kind of disperse it a little further out, since we have it, but maybe it's a good little holding piece.
And can I?
Can I, can I throw an idea out there?
Yes.
Councilman Ron, just for, or for the full council? If it's the desire to do more to Milvet, I just wanted to remind the five of you, I believe each of you have discretionary funding at your availability, since we're new into the fiscal year. That could be something that each of you individually pledge towards Milvet, towards this cause, and rolled up, that you might get close to the number that you had in mind, too.
Absolutely, happy to do that and work with you to figure that out. But one last question, for this one in particular, timing is of the essence for a lot of these families. So are we, we make that decision to move 5,000 into Milvet tonight, can we make sure we get that over to them as quickly as possible?
Yes, sir. We will move as quickly as possible, we understand times of the essence with everything going on at the federal government level.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, with that, do you want to make the motion for the extra 5,000 towards Milvet?
Yes, sir, and thank you for, Councilman, for listening. I would like to make a motion that we move forward in including Milvet within the allocated groups for funding, and that we would tap out the max on that for $5,000 for this fiscal year.
Second. Has been motion and seconded, let us vote. And that motion passes unanimously, 5 to 0.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. And with that, Councilmember Ron is stepping off the dais, we will move to item number 13. Item number 13 is approved, temporary street closure for portion of First Street in connection with SB Alter LLC project. Can we get a brief staff report on that?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one public comment, would you like to go ahead and hear from the public commenter at this point?
Yeah, let's bring them up.
Okay, we have one public comment on consent item number 13, and it is Lisa Lachlan. And sir, you do have, this is a consent calendar item, you have three minutes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone, yeah, my wife, my name's Kevin Lachlan, my wife Lisa and I pulled our girls out of school a little early today to come in, they were actually the ones that wanted to share, so I'll try to, try to honor them in what they wanted to share. I didn't realize these meetings went so long, thank you, guys, for your time and your efforts and all you do for the city of Temecula. You may recognize our names from numerous emails over the last few months, from family and friends regarding a mudslide that we had at our home here in Old Town, this is back on February 13th and 14th of earlier this year. The mudslide came down from the Alter Development, being done by Brookfield Development, and, sorry, excuse me. Yeah, and since that time, we've been displaced from our home, we've been assured by Brookfield that they would work with us to get us back into our home expediently, is the word that's usually used, and here we are, eight and a half months later, still displaced from our home. My simple ask for today is that the council not approve this item regarding the Alter Yeah, we ask that you not approve this item from the Alter Development, or any other item from the Alter Development, until we're able to return back to our home. I think that's all I'd like to say, so, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lachlan. Madam Secretary, do we have any further comments? With that, can we have a staff report on item number 13, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a staff report, a quick PowerPoint to illustrate what is going on here with the First Street closure that will be required as part of the Alter Development. As the, as it's coming up, I'll just mention that on December 12th, 2017, the city council adopted Resolution 17-86, finalizing the EIR and accepting it, along with the Alter specific plan. So at that time, they were conditioned in order to do certain improvements in their development, that they would have to tie into First Street. Near the bridge, there's some very, very deep utilities, and the utilities actually are 12 feet and 40 feet respectively, for the water and the sewer, and in order to get down that far, especially with the expansive soils and the conditions that are in place at that time, they're going to need to close First Street at the bridge there, as you go from Old Town over to Pujo. With that closure, though, what's going to happen is it essentially will, now the slide is up, you can see, it will essentially cut off a lot of the multifamily, the apartments, everything to the south of First Street that goes down, so all those residents, including where the Boys and Girls Club and the Help Center and all of that is at, those residents will then need to move in a different direction for, and this closure will be required for the entire month of January. So we definitely worked with Alter to make it after the holiday season, but you'll see there by the arrows, residents will have to head to the north or west, whichever we want to call it, but to the north, northerly, and they will have to either go right on Main Street to exit their community area, or go straight and head out to Rancho California Road, basically utilizing Pujo Street down to 6th, and then it turns over into Felix Valdez, and you'll be able to get out to Diaz, either Diaz or Rancho California Road that way. If we go to the next slide, so the northbound traffic, though, so think of the residents coming back, they would end up having to come back down through Main Street and avoid that closure as well. And you can see that if you're coming from the south, let's say you came from Temecula Parkway, you exited, you would end up going up Old Town Front Street, down Main, and then double back and come back to your apartment on Pujo Street. We can go to the next slide. And then also Santiago, anybody heading that way would also have to make a right, so if you're coming from Santiago, you will not be able to go straight over the First Street Bridge, you would have to go down Front Street, Main Street, and then also coming back. So those residents would have to come back that way as well. And the next slide. So one thing I wanted to point out is that this presentation was taken to the Old Town Local Advisory Committee last Thursday, so they saw it, they knew also that it was coming here to the city council, they did appreciate, the only one comment the Old Town Local Advisory Committee had was that they were glad it was being scheduled after the holidays. Now, if you have any questions regarding the necessity, or any further questions, Colin Cook, who's with Brookfield Properties, is here, he is the developer, he's the developer's representative, and he'll be able to answer questions as to the necessity and what we have worked through from a traffic standpoint.
Thank you very much. If possible, could we hear from Mr. Cook on how Brookfield plans to mitigate the negative impacts for the residents that's going to affect, and ultimately, the necessity of the road closure, and what it would look like if we did not have a road closure for this project?
Of course.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me here today, thank you for your time, good afternoon still, I think. So yes, Brookfield needs to shut down First Street, as Mr. Moreno alluded to, because of the nature of the construction, so we've got very deep sewer there, and we also have what we call alluvial materials, which is sandy materials, when you dig down into them, they tend to collapse, so because of that, we want to be extra cautious, we will have open bore pits, and we'll be using a modified construction approach, it's called jack-in-bore. So rather than opening a trench that takes all of First Street, we'll have to open up smaller sections of it, and those progressive pits are safe, but they're not perfectly safe. So think of a pit maybe 10 to 20 feet in diameter, maybe 10 feet deep, there's a lot going on there. There's cranes that are hoisting storm drain into that pit, or sewer pipe into that pit, whatever we're installing at that time, and because of that, the volatile nature of traffic and just ultimate precaution, we want to make sure that we are keeping people off First Street. In order to mitigate the disturbance, we will be out there signing weeks, if not months in advance, I think, is what we're saying, we'll have signage, illuminated signage with detour routes at Rancho California, at Santiago, at Front Street, and any other numerous locations where you might deem them appropriate.
Thank you very much. And this may be a question for staff, but is it feasible or possible to do what Brookfield is asking to do without the closure of First Street?
Not being, they could do it, but it would be a more dangerous condition, and it would take much, much longer. It would take probably four times longer.
And dangerous condition to the workers or the residents in totality, or just overall?
I think it would be more dangerous for the residents, people walking, people heading towards Old Town from those communities, I think it would be a more dangerous condition with regards to both pedestrians and motorists, especially somebody not knowing that it's completely closed, so somebody trying to, you know, get around a lane, maybe a lane closure, that would be more difficult, more dangerous.
And we, as a city, are we helping as far as resources with these road closures, with First Street road closure?
No, Colin would have to do that along with all his forces and everything, so city would not be involved at all, except for our normal procedures that we do, if there's signage down or anything, you know, we make sure to take care of that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Councilmember Schwank?
Yeah, thank you. So questions slash comments, so I'm not like a huge fan of either option, you know, closing the road down completely for a month, or potentially like having a construction site for four months. So a couple of concerns, like pedestrian bicyclist traffic, what is that going to look like? What's your closure going to look like, and will it keep people from going in? Because you're saying, you know, we might have pits that are 20, 30 feet deep, you know, or 30 feet across, like, what is that going to look like on the, on your closure side of things?
Of course, good question, Councilmember Schwank. We'll use full barricades at either end, and as I mentioned, it's kind of a progressive construction methodology, so we'll work west to east.
Okay.
And as we work further east, we're going to move, probably move those barricades back a little bit, but we still have to keep the signage up there, because we don't want people trying to turn down First Street, and then getting in a position where they can't turn around. We would also prohibit any pedestrian crossings over there, it just doesn't feel safe allowing anyone to access that bridge.
Yeah, that was my biggest concern, is like the pedestrian traffic, even just someone hopping over the barricade or whatever, so, I mean, we'll sort of cross that bridge when we get there, I guess, pun intended. My second concern is, is the residents, and the outreach to the residents, and is there a way to do, I know there's a way, I'd like us to see, to interact with the residents on a, more than just like a sign, signage, and I don't know what that looks like, I don't, I don't know that mailers are effective, but I don't know, there's some way to interact with the residents that are physically there versus a signage. So I don't, I don't know what that looks like, but I'd like to see some sort of like, maybe it's our social media pushing stuff out, maybe it's your social media pushing stuff out, but some sort of coordinated effort ahead of time, that isn't just the signage, that's necessary, I get that, but some other way to interact with the residents, too.
Yeah, we're open to suggestions from council and staff on that, we've had good success going door-to-door, you don't always get people, but we can leave behind a flyer, we can try and go after business hours, try and get them when they're home, we have outreach and contacts at all the apartment complexes.
Okay.
That's an easy one, where you have a manager and there's a touch point.
Yeah.
But we're happy, and happy to take direction from staff and council on that.
Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate that, I think that's a great idea. And then finally, in the, we had one-on-ones, or we had updates on this, were we able to pull traffic data on this to sort of show, because I think intuitively, we felt like most people were going north anyways, and that Santiago, sort of that connection wasn't a huge one, were you able to pull any of that data?
Yeah, it was about 1,280, which is pretty low, it's low volumes, probably more pedestrian than we do see the actual traffic, and most people are accessing that area, coming from Rancho and down Pujo, so that's what we noticed the most.
Okay.
But it is 1,280.
1,200 over Santiago?
Yep.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I think we felt that, but I'm glad that you were able to like, you know?
Yeah, we did pull that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam, anything?
No, thank you very much. So just to confirm what I heard, Mr. Moreno, it is possible to do the construction that Brookfield is asking to do without a street closure, but it would take approximately four, three to four times longer, and they would have a lot of danger issues and liability that they would have to cover on their end to ensure that the area was safe for pedestrian and vehicle traffic, is that fair to say?
That is fair to say, I'll let Colin confirm that.
Is it possible? I think it is, I think we'd also want to evaluate what the disruption does to traffic, I mean, that certainly got to increase queuing times as well, so it's hard to weigh, is shutting it down for four months, and enduring four months of undesirable traffic better than one month and worse traffic? I think that's a question we have to ask ourselves, too. And I would defer to my engineers on whether we can do it safely, they were all adamant that we should be shutting it down, but we can go back and study that, if that's the direction you'd prefer we go.
No, thank you, thank you for answering that question. With that, any further questions of staff, or?
I think I just want to just make a comment, just in general, for what was, the speaker was talking about, my heart goes out to you, I just want to tell you that, and I'm sorry you're having to deal with what you're dealing with, I know I've had a conversation with you, and I believe your wife as well, and I just hope that you guys can end up resolving this as soon as possible, being a civil issue, nothing that we as a city can take care of, but that we can do this the right way, and take care of the family and our residents, so, thank you.
Well said, Mayor Protam. With that, I will entertain a motion and a second for item number 13, approved temporary street closure for portion of First Street in connection with SB Alter LLC project.
A motion.
I'll second it. That has been motioned and seconded, let us vote. And item number 13 passes 3 to 1, with myself voting no, and Councilmember Ron abstaining. With that, we will welcome Councilmember Ron back to the dais, and while he's coming up, I will recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meeting of the Temecula Community Services District with President Schwank.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, I will now call to order the Temecula Community Services District meeting, Madam Secretary, please note that we're all still here. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
We do not.
Okay, moving through that, we'll move to our consent calendar, where we have two items, item 15 is approved action minutes of October 14th, 2025, and item 16 is approved agreement with American Global Security for contracted security services for city events, programs, facilities, and trails. I will entertain a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes 5 to 0, thank you very much, we'll move on to our Director of Community Services report, Director Russo, anything this evening?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, General Manager, anything?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Board of Directors, anything? All right, we appreciate you all, we are adjourned.
All right, we have no meeting for the Susessor Agency, the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, we have no meeting for the Temecula Housing Authority, we have our Temecula Public Financing Authority, which I will call to order, Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still here, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right, we will move to our TPFA Consent Calendar, item number 17, approved action minutes of October 14th, 2025, item number 18, adopt ordinance number TPFA 2025-01, levying special taxes within the Temecula Public Financing Authority Community Facilities District Number 25-01, Eldred Berry Park, second reading, we'll entertain a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second, that has been moved and seconded, let us vote. Let us vote. And the TPFA Consent Calendar passes unanimously, five to zero. Do we have an executive director report?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Board of Directors? Seeing none, I will adjourn the TPFA and I will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting in our public hearing. We will move on to item number nineteen, receive and file Assembly Bill sixteen hundred, financial reports fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, development impact fee expenditures. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you today is a summary of the development impact fee expenditures for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. A development impact fee is a fee imposed by the city on a new development project in order to mitigate the impact on public facilities from that development. In nineteen eighty-nine, the state legislature passed Assembly Bill sixteen hundred, which added section six-six-zero-zero-zero to the California Government Code. This legislation was known as the Mitigation Fee Act. Section six-six-zero-zero-six requires an accounting of development impact fees be provided at a public hearing every five years. The city has a practice of providing this report annually in order to provide for maximum transparency. Per the Government Code, development impact fee revenue must be spent within five years of receipt on eligible capital improvements that mitigate the impacts of the development activity. Currently, the city has eight separate development impact fees. In twenty twenty-three, the California Legislature approved Assembly Bill five sixteen, amending Government Code sections related to the reporting of development impact fees. This amendment now requires the annual report to include all public improvements identified in the previous report and the approximate construction dates. As a result, you will see many capital improvement projects listed that did not have current year expenditures. Additionally, the city has new requirements to provide the payee information on how to access the fee account activity. The next two slides summarize the development impact fee activity for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The development impact fee report includes the beginning balance, fees collected, interest earned, current year expenditures, and ending balance by fee type. The list of capital improvement projects programmed to utilize the development impact fees are listed by fee type as well. For fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, two point three million in DIF revenue was collected across the eight separate DIF accounts. A total of six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars of interest was earned and four million was spent for eligible capital projects listed here. The remaining DIF fund balance for all eight accounts totals approximately twelve point one million and is programmed for expenditure in accordance with the capital improvement program adopted by the council on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. This concludes my report and I am available for any questions.
Any questions of my colleagues? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments? I will close the public hearing. And I will entertain discussion and/or motion.
Move approval.
That has been motioned and seconded. Let us vote. And item number nineteen passes unanimously, five to zero. We will move on to our next public hearing. Item number twenty, introduce ordinance amending Title seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code to make technical revisions and updates to Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance Long Range Project Number L R twenty-five dash zero zero nine nine. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I guess we're evening now. As mentioned, this is L R two-five-zero-zero-nine-nine, an amendment to the Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. Pops up here, we'll get started. There we go. Okay, so a little bit of background. The Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance is a state requirement and also a virtue of Welo. This guides development to create more water-conscious landscapes. And then the city's current Welo requirements were last updated in twenty fifteen. Quite a bit's happened since then in the world of landscape, so we need an update. The proposed ordinance would amend Chapter seventeen point two-three, the Water Efficiency Landscape Design, to ensure consistency with the citywide design guidelines and current best practices. Starting with definitions, we're going to be adding various definitions for new technologies and to ensure applicability is not challenged. Specifically, we're adding definitions for shall and would. So that way, there's no questions in the field. We're going to be amending the evapotranspiration definition to reference the most up-to-date measurement for Temecula. This is a number that changes periodically, I believe annually, and this will just reference that, that. So we do not have to update this manually ourselves. As far as landscape design requirements, we're going to add a note to use specific plan plant lists when applicable. And we're going to require separate irrigation valves for plants with different watering needs. So you don't have a high, high-use plant versus with a low use. And then we're going to add turf and as an exemption for senior care facilities in their inner courtyards for mobility device safety when they're moving around with their different mobility devices. Continue with our design requirements. We're going to limit inorganic ground cover, gravel, stones, et cetera, to fifteen percent and only let it be an accent piece. We don't want that to be the predominant landscape. We're going to add landscape design standards for parking areas to ensure consistency with the citywide design guidelines. Again, these are already in the citywide design guidelines. We just want to put them in the code so there's no if, ands, or buts about it in the field. We're going to require canopy trees to be used in parking areas to provide shade and really just kind of work on that heat island effect. Irrigation system design requirements. We're going to allow bio-retention areas as an exception for overhead spray systems when used in landscape areas with less than ten feet in width and would be subject to the approval of the city engineer. For our residential commercial requirements, we're going to add trimming requirements for trees and large shrubs located near all utility equipment, five feet from any water gas meters or sewer laterals, ten feet from utility poles, and then eight feet from any fire hydrants, fire department sprinklers, stand pipes, things like that. And these are consistent with Edison's requirements for trimming for themselves. Maintenance and enforcement. We're going to require a modification application for any changes to approved landscape plans. Again, this is a common practice. We just want to codify it for everyone. And then keeping in that, we're going to, any trees removed must be replaced in accordance with approved plans. So if it was a specific size and species of a tree, that size and species of a tree will be replaced. Keeping with maintenance and enforcement, maintenance, maintenance of trees must comply with the protracted tree ordinance, pretty self-explanatory, but again, want to eliminate any confusion. And we're going to clarify the ground cover, ground cover to be used in addition to, not in place of landscaping. And then our last change here in our appendices and plant lists, we're going to be pulling two. Oleander is poisonous and our desert spoon is quite pokey. I don't recommend we keep that around for safety sake. Little bit of history about the ordinance. Katie, who drafted all this for us, and I'm just here presenting on her behalf, was good enough to present this to the P C Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee on August, the General Plan Update Subcommittee later in August of twenty twenty-five. And then this was seen at the October first Planning Commission, where they adopted a resolution recommending adoption. SEQA, staff has determined this ordinance is exempt from the requirements of California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section one-five-zero-six-one-B-three, the common sense exemption. And then staff's recommendation is that the city council introduce and read by title only the proposed ordinance. This completes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. We also have our lovely landscape architect, Blanca, here for the real questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions of my colleagues? Other than the disappointment of the oleander plant being removed?
Never liked it, sir. It's got to go.
One question. For new developments in this, this new, what do we call it here? The new ordinance that we're introducing, does it talk about native plants and pollinators and helping out the endangered monarch butterfly?
We have those in our plant species. Our plant list is based on the Calflora, which is kind of the California, kind of the... It's kind of what?
Blanca, you want to step up? I'm fumbling. Sorry, I didn't think that. Hi.
Yeah, the, the plant list already incorporates native vegetation and water-wise landscape planting.
Perfect. Thank you so much for answering my question. Appreciate it. All right, with that, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we did have a public comment card that was submitted by Neil Cleveland, but I do not see Mr. Cleveland in the audience anymore. And that is the only speaker card that was turned in on this item.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I would just say, Mr. Cleveland, if you're watching, feel free to email all of council and we will read your comment with no more comments. I will close the public hearing. And I will entertain discussion and/or seconding a motion. Move approval.
Second.
That has been motioned by Councilmember Stewart and seconded by Councilmember Ron. Let us vote. And item number twenty passes unanimously, five to zero. We will move on to our business item. Item number twenty-one, adopt resolutions of necessity for acquisition by eminent domain of certain real property interests for public purposes on assessors parcel numbers nine-two-one dash two-eight-one dash zero-one-one and nine-two-one dash two-eight-zero dash zero-zero-two for construction of public street and related improvements and all uses necessary or convenient thereto in connection with Vincent Moraga improvements. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you very much. We have a staff report, a presentation regarding this item. And it's recommending the adoption of a resolution of necessity for the Alter Development. Next slide. So part of this, you've already heard tonight when we talked about the detour, but Alter Development was conditioned for construction of certain off-site public improvements that would be required at the intersections of Rancho California Road and Vincent Moraga. So that intersection there, due to the impacts that will be taken on from the Western Bypass that will be running through the Alter Development, would require a little bit more widening in order to make that situation work as far as a traffic standpoint goes. So they are asking to, actually Alter started the proceedings and they were able to settle on seven of the properties prior to today. And now the eighth one happened earlier today. So therefore, we're down to one property where Brookfield was not able to enter into an agreement in order to obtain this sliver property. Next slide. So this is kind of an overview of all of the properties that were originally required. As you can see, Vincent Moraga goes actually through and over to Ridge Park Drive. You can see that originally Vincent Moraga was a cul-de-sac and then later remapped to go further. And it ended up going up and turning around to Ridge Park. So in order to clean all this up and in order to get the correct right-of-way, it's going to be required for Alter to get these sliver properties that you see in the various colors. Taking note of one particular ownership, and this is the last one that needs to be obtained, it's Triple G partnership at the corner of Rancho California Road and Vincent Moraga. Next slide, please. So in order for these improvements to happen, as we discussed, it was already required for the Western Bypass to be able to come through. But as noted in the second bullet item, in order to get this sliver, there's going to be right-of-way that's going to be needed. Some sidewalk needs to be constructed, some curb and gutter, utility relocations, most particularly the detector check that's on the property. And then the impacts were a driveway reconstruction as well as providing ingress and egress and then losing a couple of parking spaces as well. Next slide, please. Here is an overview of the site plan and you can see what is needed. It's a five thousand five hundred and seventy-two square foot easement, and that's for the street dedication. Also, a water easement in order for that detector check to be pushed back. Rancho California water requires an easement around that detector check for maintenance purposes. So that happens all the time in private development where a detector check would be on site. Rancho Water is going to require an easement, no matter what. There also would be a T C E, a temporary construction easement, that would be required for eighteen months in order to get the work done during that time. So that's kind of an overview of the site itself and what's going to be required. Next slide. Now, in order to adopt the proposed resolution of necessity, there's going to have to be findings that are made for adoption of it. And you can see there in lettered A, B, C, and D. A is the public interest and necessity for the project. B, the project is planned and located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury. And then C, the subject property interest described in the resolution of necessity is necessary for the project. And then lastly, the city has made an offer as required by Government Code Section seven-two-six-seven-point-two to the owner of the property, which has been done. So let's go to the next slide. So authorization for acquisition of the property by, by eminent domain. The city does seek to acquire the subject property interest by eminent domain for the construction of that project by the developer. The city is obtaining it because the developer was not able to obtain an agreement on this one last parcel. And the city is authorized to acquire the subject property interest based on the government codes that you see in the second bullet item. And all the sections are listed on how lawful it is for the city to be able to do so. Next slide. So authorization for these acquisitions, Government Code provides that the power of eminent domain may be exercised to acquire the property only for a public use. And as such, this project is doing that. Also, the second item, the developer of the Alter project entered into an agreement with the city requiring that the developer complete the required off-site improvements. And then at such a time, the city would be able to acquire an interest in the land and will permit such improvements to be constructed. So here, the city and developer entered into an agreement pursuant to that Government Code six-six-four-six-two-point-five on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And then also, the last item, same code, Government Code section provides that a city or county may acquire by negotiation or commence eminent domain proceedings pursuant to Title seven of Part Three of the Code of Civil Procedure to acquire that interest in the land. So you can see there's a lot of information there regarding Government Code sections and, and, but I didn't think I would read it all to you. You can read it just fine. So that's kind of a summary of those three points. Next slide, please. So now we'll go through the A, B, C, and D. So the first one, as I mentioned earlier, public interest and necessity require that the project be done. So the project was conditioned, as I mentioned, and it is in the public interest for this to be done. As we know, the Western Bypass is an important, very important circulation element to the city of Temecula. And therefore, in order to make that happen, those improvements would have to improve also Rancho California Road and Vincent Moraga. So that's one area that, where we're showing that the public interest is required. As I mentioned in the second bullet point, it is consistent with the circulation element of the general plan. And so this project is consistent with a regional transportation system that accommodates the safe and efficient movement of people and goods to and from the community. As we know, that Western Bypass would be integral to the entire network of the city's infrastructure and how people would be moving from Temecula Parkway all the way north connecting into Diaz Road, ultimately into Winchester, which is why it's so-called the Western Bypass, in order to move people around. The project as planned and designed seeks to minimize the impact on the private parcels. So the subject property interests on the Triple G property are located along the north and eastern boundaries of Rancho and Vincent Moraga. And the city's proposed acquisition of the subject interest will not impact any structures on the Triple G parcel. So let's move to the next slide, please. B, the project is planned and located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. The project as planned and designed will essentially construct those improvements. And it's also, not only, as mentioned in the previous slide, it's necessary for Rancho California Road, Vincent Moraga, but it will ease congestion throughout the rest of the city. And it is planned and designed to minimize impacts on those private parcels, on all of them that were at the very beginning of this presentation. So the city's proposed acquisition of the subject property interest for the project will not impact, once again, any structures on the Triple G property. Let's go to letter C. The subject property interests described in the resolution of necessity are necessary for the project. As was mentioned before, what is necessary is the five thousand five hundred and seventy-two square foot dedication of a permanent easement for the ingress and egress, but everybody moving around those properties. The three thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven square foot temporary construction easement, T C E, will be required for a length of time. And then, as I mentioned, also Rancho Water would always want a maintenance easement around any detector check that they would be installing. So they need that as well. So as was mentioned before, it's necessary to relocate the utilities, detector check, and complete the project. So the project cannot be constructed without the acquisition of this, these interests. D. Letter D. The city has made an offer as required by Government Code. So here's kind of the timeline of what occurred with Triple G. On May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, the city extended an offer by Government Code Section seven-two-six-seven-point-two to Triple G. City staff attempted to meet with the owner on several occasions and to discuss the city's offer and negotiate in good faith, but the owner did not make itself available during any of those. any of those meetings. The, in late summer, twenty twenty-five, city staff was notified by the developer that the owner reached out to initiate negotiations with Brookfield Properties, with the developer once again, and, but however, as of the date of this hearing, no negotiated agreement has been reached between the developer and the record owner. So based on the timing of the project, and as you can see outside these windows, how far they have moved, as far as the grading and the slopes, and the desire to move forward with the western bypass, it's necessary for the city to consider the adoption of the resolution of necessity. So the resolution of necessity does not foreclose a negotiated agreement with the owner. It's only the resolution for the eminent domain proceedings. Next slide, please. So based on this information presented today, including the agenda report, the resolution of necessity and documents referenced in the agenda report, and the evidence at today's hearing, the city staff is requesting that the city council adopt this proposed resolution of necessity, authorizing the acquisition by eminent domain of the subject property interest on the Triple G, I should say, GGG, Triple G property. So I'm available for any questions. This will conclude my report, and also the city attorney and city attorney counsel that has been working on this project is available as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moreno. Any questions of city staff from my colleagues? Seeing none, do we have any public comments on this agenda item? Seeing none. All right. With that, I would just like to say, before we get into discussion, if we have any discussion, that eminent domain is something that I could think, I could speak for all of us when I say that we do not take lightly, and we go through many steps, as Mr. Moreno just read, to get to the point that we are at now. And I just want to say thank you to Brookfield for working diligently with the other private property owners to come to an agreement that way before it came to council. So thank you for all that work. And with that, I'll entertain discussion and/or a seconded and motion. I will motion for item number twenty-one.
I'll second.
That has been moved and seconded. And item number twenty-one passes unanimously, five to zero. With that, we already did item number twenty-two, departmental reports we'll receive and file. Madam City Clerk, do we have any more public comments on non-agenda items? Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any items for future city council agendas?
I do.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I did a Facebook post like a week ago, and it was on the e-motorcycle being towed because it was on the streets of Temecula. And so it got like six hundred thousand views. And, but what was more disturbing to me is I got a, like a special message or private message from a mother who actually bought an e-motorcycle, not being told it wasn't legal to ride in the streets of Temecula. So I'd like for us as a council to look at maybe a city ordinance that would require a seller of e-motocycles within our city limits, because that's all we have, a disclaimer, a disclosure that this e-motorcycle is an off-road, off-street, off-vehicle. If you want to buy it, make sure that's what you're going to use it for, because if you're going to use it for your kid to drive to high school or junior high school or elementary school, you can't. It's illegal to ride an e-motorcycle in the city of Temecula on city streets. So I would like to have this discussion at the council level and look at what our options are, what our legal options are, and so that's my ask for a city agenda item.
Second. That has been motioned and seconded. To bring back at a future city council meeting. And that motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Any other items for future city council agendas? Seeing none. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. Thank you, my colleagues, for the civil discussion we had throughout the entire meeting. Thanks for everyone tuning in online. Thanks for the high schoolers that were back there from three to four for their hour of government, local government-ness. With that, I will have a city manager's report before I close.
Peter, do you want to go first? Or you get... I have nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we did have a closed session tonight. The council approved a settlement in the Wagner case, which is listed on the agenda, and that is being subject to the approval of the settling defendants and no other action to report from closed session.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thorson. With that, I will adjourn the city council meeting until our November eighteenth city council meeting. See you all soon, and thank you, Bella, for my tie.